All right, everyone. I'd like to call the order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees on Tuesday, November 4th, 2023. And now I would like to ask Clerk Rodriguez to please do her call.
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Mary Berry.
I'm here.
Vice President Colette.
Good afternoon.
I'm here. President Smith. Trustee Westlake. Trustee Woodley. Trustee Church.
Here.
And then she's Billy. Is that correct? Okay. Vice President Scott got one more.
Thank you so much. All right, we have some very exciting activities that we're going to be doing. For a matter of formality with the meeting, I am going to be opening items 1.03, 1.04, and 1.05 all together. That is the Presentation of Colors, the National Anthem, and the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll be opening all of those items together. And so we have some very special guests with us here today, and including our JROTC Superintendent and Elite Color Guard will be leading us in a Presentation of Colors in just a moment. But I would like to start by recognizing the highest ranking military official with us today. On behalf of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, I am so pleased to welcome Director of the Joint Staff for the Nevada National Guard Brigadier General Roger Waters. General Waters, would you please stand for a moment? Thank you so much for being with us today. While Veterans Day memorials and celebrations took place at the end of last week and across the weekend, we are going to honor our veterans at today's meeting with a special presentation of the colors from our JROTC Superintendent's Elite Color Guard. The Superintendent's Elite Color Guard is composed of cadets from all of our JROTC programs in our district and led by Cadet Command Sergeant Major Kayla Gutierrez. In a moment, we will commence the Presentation of Colors, but I would first like to introduce the members of the Color Guard. The Color Guard is comprised of the Silver State Brigade, Cadet Colonel Isabella Vergara, and the following cadets: From Galena High School, David Chinis; From McQueen High School, Gunnar Friedrichsen; Leila Mead; From North Valleys High School, Aiden Devera; From Reed High School, Lily Rolson; And from HUG High School, Adamari Cruz; From Spanish Springs High School, Angela Eaton; From Sparks High School, Isabel Garcia; From Worcester High School, Ronaldo Gonzalez; From Damani Ranch High School, Trenton Jackson; And Trace Ward. The National Anthem will be sung by Cadet Staff Sergeant Lillian Gilpin from Spanish Springs High School. And following the anthem, we are very honored to have General Waters lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And now, please rise and remain standing for the Presentation of Colors by the Superintendent's Elite Color Guard, followed by the anthem and pledge.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hail At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Were the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Order. Arms.
Fellow Americans, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Face. Forward. March.
Thank you. You may be seated. And now that closes item 1.03, 04, and 05. Now I'll move on to item 1.06, our Land Acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Numu, Northern Paiute, Niwi, Western Shoshone, and Niuw, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for Indigenous people, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you so much. That closes item 1.06. And now, we're going to be making some changes to the agenda today. In order to respect the time of Brigadier General Waters, I will be reordering the agenda to hear the Resolution Honoring Veterans and the Starbase Presentation now. We will then hear the resolutions for Native American Heritage Month and National Apprenticeship Week before moving on to the Consent Agenda and the remainder of the agenda. All right. So with that said, we will go ahead and we will, after we finish setting up, so we'll just take one moment here, and I will go ahead and first open item 4.01. This is the Adoption of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, Resolution 23-019, a Resolution honoring veterans in the Washoe County School District. This is an item for possible action. And now, we would like to welcome up, whom I am told is the most organized and prepared presenter that we've had in a very long time, Rick Fernandez. He is the Chief Warrant Officer for Special Forces and the Washoe County School District JROTC Operations Officer, and he'll be coming to the podium to tell us about his work in the district to support our JROTC programs. And as the JROTC Operations Officer, Officer Fernandez comes to the podium, I will again share that I'm told that no one has ever been as prepared for a presentation as him, and that certainly makes sense, given his time in the Special Forces. So welcome, Warrant Officer Fernandez.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Our cadets, they truly appreciate it, having the opportunity to come out. And we don't call it a performance, but just to honor our colors, right? That's what we need to, like, I'm even getting chills thinking about it. Anyway, thank you again for giving us the opportunity. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Chief Warrant Officer Rick Fernandez from the District Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, also known as JRTC. I'm an eight-year JRTC instructor with 26 years of active duty within the Special Operations Committee. So this is a little different for me, but I'm changing, right? I'm changing. Our other instructors bring in vast experience from varied backgrounds in human resources, mechanics, infantry, engineers, artillery, and aviation, to highlight a few. Let me see. Boom, there you go. Our mission in JRTC is to motivate young people to be better citizens. The vision of our cadets in JRTC is to provide a quality citizen of character through a comprehensive leadership development program while fostering partnerships with families, communities, and educational institutions. As part of our program, we develop the students to be leaders, scholars, and athletes, as these qualities have been proven to personally empower young people. Cadets participating in JRTC routinely exhibit a higher attendance rate, higher grade point average, and graduation rates compared to their peers. Moreover, supporting Goal Five of the district's strategic plan to empower all learners for their future and reach excellent target of having at least 19 out of 20 students participate in dual credit, advanced placement, international bachelorette and/or CTE pathways. Right, Josh? There you go. While participation in JRTC does not require military service commitment, junior ROTC cadets may qualify for advanced placement in the senior ROTC collegiate program or in active or reserve components of the Armed Forces. The JRTC program is a citizenship program. It is an investment in our future for our nation, helping our youth maximize their potential in pursuing their dreams while developing responsible citizens who value service to the community and our nation. Our primary objective is to teach enduring values. These are the seven Army values that we beat our cadets up about, right? And they are leadership, discipline, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and personal courage. Cadets have, in understanding these values, right, our cadets have appreciation for our school, community, and our country, and we really don't beat up our cadets. We have 35 instructors within our district, and each program requires one senior instructor, being a commissioned officer or warrant officer, and one NCO or sergeant. Our instructors have a minimum of 20 years of active duty experience, either in the regular military or National Guard. An innate trait that all instructors bring to the program is their ability to lead and teach. Selfless service and continued service to our youth is what motivates our instructors. Our Silver State Brigade manages, coordinates, and supports all instructors' cadet activities, certification, logistics, and training. It's a tough three-man show, but we do it. Our 11 programs throughout the district consist of approximately 1,854 cadets, and as you could see, our Army programs are the biggest with Inkine, Galena, Worcester, Reno, Sparks, McQueen, HUG, Spana, and Spanish Springs High School. Our Navy programs are at Damani Ranch and Reed High School, and we have one Air Force program in North Valleys High School. Additional goals for our cadets are to improve physical fitness, communicate more effectively, work as a team member, remain drug-free, graduating from high school, thinking critically and creatively, and pursuing a meaningful careers, especially in the areas of technology, engineering, and mathematics. The next few slides highlight some of our seasonal activities our cadets participate in. Raider Challenge is more of the physical stuff. We recently had Reno, Spanish Springs, and Galena High School attend the national championships in Fort Knox, Kentucky, and they did very well. Let me see. Air rifle season, some of our cadets have gone to the National Air Rifles Championship. They could go all the way up to the Olympics. When I was teaching at HUG, we had one female, but it matters, that went to Texas on a full ride marksmanship scholarship. It was pretty neat. And then drill. That's your standard drill and ceremony, right? The kids have a lot of fun with it. They do unarmed exposition, which is a lot of fun for our cadets. We do, also do cyber patriot, and that's throughout the year. And the Leadership Academic Bowl, this prepares them, they actually take a bunch of, I think there's a thousand questions from the SAT, and they just go over them, drill them, drill them. Last couple of years, Reno and HUG High School have gone to the national championships in Washington, DC. So we've been representing your school district very well, ma'am. So JRCC Cadet Leadership Challenge is our annual capstone event where we develop and assess cadets' leadership abilities and challenge our cadets both physically and mentally. We take them out for about three days. This year, we're going to Camp Parks in Dublin, California, kind of simulate what it's be like to be in the military, and the kids absolutely love it. They absolutely love it. So we're looking forward to it. This is the end of my presentation. However, I've provided additional slides on our curriculum for your personal reference. Thank you. I'll be followed by, right? You're not followed by.
Yep, in just a moment, in just a moment. Thank you so much. We appreciate this. And so now we'll be moving on in a moment to reading our resolution. Our board is uniquely honored to have three members on it who have all served our country in the Armed Forces. In recognition of that, Vice President Dr. Diane Nicolet had a wonderful idea that I fully support to have all three of our veteran school board trustees share in the reading of the resolution. We'll be asking Trustee Rodriguez to read the first section, Trustee Woodley to read the second section, and then Trustee Church to read the conclusion. Before we start that, though, but staying in that same order of Clerk Rodriguez, Trustee Woodley, and then Trustee Church, I wanted to give you each a moment of opportunity to share the details of your service so that our community can understand how you've served our nation.
Well, thank you, Madam President. That's a surprise. Um, yeah, just a quick, you know, about my service, I did 11 years in the Nevada National Guard, where majority of that was actually activated or deployed. I did a couple of years at Fort Irwin, California, which you guys don't know, that's a booming metropolis. It's about 40 miles north of Barstow, California. So I was there for a couple of years, and our job was really to train units that were rotating in and out of theater, so whether that be Afghanistan or Iraq. So it's actually a lot of fun. I got to grow a beard and play as the bad guy. Then after that, it was, my first deployment overseas was '08, '09, then I went to Haiti in 2010 during a quake. I was there for about a month, came back and had another tour, '11, '12. So that's my time overseas. It's, got to see the world, most of it was the third world, but, you know, it was interesting. Really made me appreciate a lot of the privileges that we have as Americans. I know sometimes we'll get mad and frustrated being the third car at the drive-thru, and really makes you think when you see other countries where there is no food. So it was an honor, it was a privilege to serve, and I enjoyed it.
Thank you so much, Clerk Rodriguez. Trustee Woodley.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the privilege of serving the United States Marine Corps for nine years. I got to participate in Operation Just Cause in Panama when we tried to pull out Noriega, and then also in the Gulf War, Desert Shield and Desert Storm. And now I currently serve on the Nevada Military Support Alliance for the State of Nevada, where we help and support the unfortunate 57 Gold Star families. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Woodley. Trustee Church.
Thank you. Yes, Jeff Church, US Air Force Lieutenant Colonel, retired, served approximately 27 years active in reserve with numerous deployments. And I made up a little list of comments I wanted to make, not specific to myself, but if I may read them, and it says, "What is a veteran? It has been said that a veteran is someone that has signed a blank check to their country, payable up to and including their life. Veterans have volunteered or been drafted, but a veteran is someone that has served their country and is either still serving or left service under honorable conditions. Now technically, some laws define veterans as those that served 180 days of active duty or in combat, but in my opinion, all that serve, including in the Garden Reserve, are veterans to be thanked. In the military, you adhere to military ideals and orders. Unlike civilians, even routine disobedience can end one up in jail, the brig, such as not showing up for work, not obeying orders, not saluting a senior officer, failure to wear the uniform properly, et cetera. The military can send you anytime, to anywhere. And I point out that the Armed Forces have led the way in equality and inclusion. And it's, for me, it was an honor to serve my country, as did my father in World War II, and as did my grandfather, my father Lieutenant Colonel Sheldon Church, and my grandfather Major Wiley Church, who was killed in World War I. And yes, I'm that old."
Thank you so much. Thank you, all three of you. We're incredibly honored to have you, not just as members of this governing body, but also as public servants in Nevada. And now, we will read the resolution, starting with Clerk Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Recognizing and honoring veterans in the Washoe County School District. Whereas the First Veterans Day proclamation signed by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1954 called on Americans to pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all its wars and who contribute so much to the preservation of this nation. And whereas the Washoe County School District recognizes and honors all Americans who have served in the Army, the Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, and Space Force during times of conflict and peace, and...
Whereas there are hundreds of veterans employed by the Washoe County School District in all employee categories, to include three veterans serving on the Board of Trustees. And whereas some of the school district's most prominent military veterans are those who lead the Silver State Brigade, our Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Department and school-based programs. And whereas our JROTC instructors work hard to uphold the intent of their joint mission statement, quote, "to motivate young people to be citizens of character by instilling in them a sense of personal responsibility, accomplishments, and the importance of serving their nation and community." Now...
Be it resolved, the WCSD Board of Trustees extends their appreciation to all veterans employed by the school district and their commitment to our students. Be it further resolved, that WCSD Board of Trustees urges everyone to thank the veterans in their lives and community by supporting veteran-owned businesses, volunteering at veteran or military family organizations, or donating to causes that support veterans. Approved this 14th day of November, 2023.
Thank you so much. Before we go to public comment, because this is an item for action, I would like to invite up General Waters to say a few words.
Madam President, thank you. What I'd ask everybody in the room is to recall that good-looking color guard. Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and in high school, throughout the entire Chucky Meadows. Anybody questions where America is going, the United States is going, they just need to see and interact with that fine group of people as an example of Nevada, and they put all questions to bed. Madam President, you stated earlier, you talked about generations, and we do. We owe debt of gratitude to generations, and I think that's what everyone is in this room for, understanding the importance of future generations and the success that they bring to our nation. I thank the Board of Trustees for everything you do. Thank you, thank you, dedicating your lives to the youth of the state of Nevada and to our country, and the great folks that are here. This represents what our democracy is about. We don't always have to agree, but we come together and we respectfully listen to one another, and we talk through issues and come up with ways to make things happen. The way specifically here to make sure the youth of Nevada are ready to be productive citizens and move our nation forward. As Mr. Fernandez stated, Chief Warrant Officer for Fernandez stated, "The National Guard has assets within the high schools, teaching junior ROTC as senior instructors and as assistant instructors. We also have three programs throughout the state, the youth programs and Nevada National Guard. When you hear the Director of the Joint Staff what I do, one of the great things that I get to be a part of, frankly, is youth programs of the Nevada National Guard. So we have the Battle Born Youth Challenge Academy at Elko, which is high school level. We have Starbase Henderson, which is now partners with Clark County, and we have Starbase High Sierra right here in the Chucky Meadows, partnered with the 152nd at the Reno International Airport. The National Guard fully understands and supports what is important to the state of Nevada and to the security of our great nation. Thank you again. Thank you for what you're doing, taking your time. Mr. Fernandez, thank you for what you're doing. And I'll tell you what, thank your great cadets. They looked fantastic. What an amazing representation of youth in the United States today." So Madam President, I really appreciate this opportunity to state, to come up here and have a few words, again, to the three veterans and to the entire Board of Trustees. Thank you, thank you, thank you for what you do for our state. Your efforts, though may not always be appreciated at the surface level, are always appreciated in depth and understanding throughout the entire state. Thank you so much for what you do. Semper Fi, Marine.
Thank you, General Waters. JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no cards.
I'll open it up to my colleagues before we go to a vote. Okay? And before we do go to that vote, we have one item that is also a special request and wonderful idea of Vice President Dr. Diane Nicolet, and we have a video that we'll be
From Detroit down to Houston, New York to L.A., where there's pride in every American heart, and it's time we stand and say. Oh, and I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA. God bless this country, and I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA.
All right, and so now I'll bring this item back to my board, looking for a motion.
Madam President, I'm ready to make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolution twenty-three dash zero one nine, a resolution honoring veterans in Washoe County School District.
A second.
All right, motion by Clerk Rodriguez, seconded by Trustee Church. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries seven to zero. Now let's come up and let's take a photo. Thank you. (Applause) item four point zero two, which, as I promised, is the presentation and discussion on the Department of Defense Starbase program and their partnership with the Washoe County School District, including how they support student academic success. This is an item for presentation and discussion. And so I would like to introduce our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Troy Parks, who will be presenting this item. We also have other presenters here joining us. We have Tiffany Young, the Program Director for Starbase High Sierra, and Tiffany Kaiser, the Glenn Duncan Elementary School student, as teacher, who will be with us. And we also have some additional very special guests, Tanika Scott Montgomery, the Office Manager for the Starbase program, Kiana Bunting, a teacher within Starbase, and then also Perry Healy, a teacher with Starbase. And now we welcome you, Dr. Parks, to kick us off.
Thank you, President Smith. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Enfield, yes, Troy Parks, your proud Chief Academic Officer, and quite a bit prouder today after that presentation. It is my honor to introduce one of our outstanding community partners in the form of High Sierra Starbase by the Department of Defense. So please welcome Ms. Tiffany Young, the Program Director, and she will get us started. Welcome, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Young. As you come up and you get yourself seated, I do want everyone to know that, I don't know how, maybe it was many months ago at this point, I accepted an invitation to come see Starbase in action. And the minute I saw this program and the children engaging with this curriculum, I knew we had to come and bring you to one of these meetings so our whole community can understand what it is that you're doing. So thank you for accepting that invitation, and we're very excited to learn more.
Thank you so much, Trustee Smith. And I also have General Waters, he'll be joining in and chiming in. It's been a long time since I've been here. So for the record, again, my name is Tiffany Young. I am the Program Director for Starbase High Sierra. And so today I'm just going to share some information with you all about our outstanding program, the wonderful partnership we have with the Nevada National Guard, what we're doing in the lives of students around STEM. You'll hear from a teacher from Glenn Duncan Elementary School, and then we'll talk a little bit more about other aspects of the program. So in your package, you all have the PowerPoint, you have supplemental materials around our mission log, other resources, and we'll just get into it. So Starbase is not new to the program of STEM. It's been in existence for over twenty years. There are now eighty-five sites across the nation that have Starbase programs, and the program is designed specifically through the Department of Defense. The fiscal agent and the housing entity for Nevada is the Nevada National Guard. So as General Waters mentioned earlier, we have two sites, one in Henderson and one here in Reno, at the Nevada Air Guard National Base, the one hundred and fifty-second, Carolina Wing, yes. And so we have the opportunity to provide hands-on STEM to students in that facility. We were awarded about a half a million dollars to renovate a building that was provided by the Nevada National Guard for two classrooms for STEM education on the base. In that facilitation of that process, we were able to bring in another half a million dollars in programming, everything from three D printers to Ozobots and Spiros, hands-on science experiments and equipments, additionally to be able to hire two very high-qualified teachers. As mentioned earlier, Kiana Bunting and Perry Healy are two of our teachers. Tanika Scott Montgomery is our Office Manager. One teacher has a master's in STEM, the other one has all the STEM badging that they obtained when they were here in Washoe County School District. STEM is hands-on for our students, and what is the wonderful opportunity being under the Nevada National Guard is the intention around community, the intention around education, the intention around a focus of diversity, equity, and inclusion. As I said, there's eighty-five sites across the country, and Starbase has three levels. There's one point oh, two point oh, and three point oh. We are currently at one point oh, where we're accessing opportunities to provide high-end STEM for fifth-grade students and Title I schools. Our goal is then to move to two point oh, which will be middle school, after-school programs, and then three point oh, which will be high school, after-school programs. But for right now, our fifth-grade students are coming onto our base. The way the program is designed is that students get twenty-five hours of STEM education. So we have an MOU with the Washoe County School District that says that they'll provide transportation and lunches for students, and there's no charge. Students come to the Nevada Air Guard Base one day a week for five weeks, and they're there for an entire school day, and they have the opportunity to have hands-on STEM. So for example, if a school has two fifth-grade classes, both fifth-grade classes will come, one on Mondays, one on Tuesdays for five weeks, and then we rotate out. Our goal and our accountability for the Department of Defense is to provide thirty-five-week academies a year throughout the entire school year. So when you think about the Nevada National Guard and youth programs, General Waters mentioned, we have everything from Battle Born Youth Challenge to our Starbase programs that are located across the state. It is really about having an unforgettable science, technology, engineering, and mathematics educational experience. Our students come and cry on the last day because they have to leave, and it's only been one day a week for five weeks. Our students have high-tech information. They are doing computer-aided design, and coding robots, and building materials, and learning the mathematics of shooting trebuchets and air rockets across the parking lot. Not only are they involved in hands-on STEM, they are in the space and place of our Nevada National Guard. They get a chance to see our Guardsmen's and Women engaged in their roles, whether it is the fire station, whether it is the intel department, whether it is emergency management or pilots. Our students get a chance to get on fire trucks, climb in C-one-thirties, see what technology and communication processes look like, and they get this on a daily basis. So what you see on screen are just some of our photos from the activities our students have been involved in. They learn everything from buoyancy to how to build a trebuchet, to use it, to coding Spiros and Ozobots, hands-on STEM engagement. They are collaborating with each other, building their critical thinking skills, and having group and teamwork. No one's working in isolation. They are building greater relationships than they have, and we get to build upon what's already happening in their classrooms and at their schools. They can take that information back, and teachers are engaged as well. Our teachers that come are the teacher of record. They get a chance to be involved in the program, they support, whether it's classroom management or hands-on activities, and they love to see the engagement and the light in the students that come to our program. General Waters, you want to jump in anywhere?
Dan Waters, for the record, Director of the Joint Staff, Nevada National Guard. As Ms. Tiffany stated, one of the things we have, unfortunately, is more need than we have capacity. So recognizing that the Nevada National Guard, we've dedicated more space, we will be working with the state and frankly, the federal government to acquire more funding, more construction funding, to expand that project on the airbase. We have additional, probably about five thousand square feet, so we're looking at some additional classroom space. But unfortunately, I'd say regardless of how much we're able to grow on base, we're always going to have that need throughout the state. So as Ms. Tiffany stated, expanding the program, acquiring different properties, we have some additional properties, the Nevada National Guard that is out at Sted, so possibly growing out in that location as we move forward in future years. It's a big thing for us. This is a preventative program, frankly, to keep kids involved, keep them interested in schools, and we find it incredibly important and frankly, very rewarding.
Yeah, thank you for that. So just to add, the exposure to our community's youth is high for us. As I said, twenty-five hours of STEM. The program is designed to be aligned with Nevada academic standards, and so you all have that in your packets as well. We are intentional about curriculum and outline. The curriculum is designed by a company called Spectrum, who partners with the Department of Defense. So we are within those guidelines to apply that curriculum to our classrooms, but we can make modifications where we see fit. And so we are ensuring that they are involved, they are active, that they are understanding and engaged, and that twenty-five hours is not met with any downtime. From the time they arrive to the base, and they already have call signs, and they already have nicknames, and they are already navigating through, whether they're at Alpha, Charlie, Tango, wherever table they're sitting at, understanding what it is like to be on a military base, respecting the men and women there, but understanding that it's also their space. And so we talk about a sense of belonging, we talk about community and engagement. Starbase gets an opportunity to be able to do that, as well as having our teachers provide culturally responsive practices in their classrooms. The other thing we want to just move through is our populations that are served. There's often questions about who we work with and how do we serve this. The Department of Defense specifically outlines that the program is for fifth-grade students in Title I schools for Starbase one point oh. And so the question always begs, well, what about the other kids? So we also have an MOU with the Boys and Girls Club of Chucky Meadows, where we do specialty camps in the summer. We're also going to be scheduling programs for children of the military. I also send my teachers out to Winamuck in the summer for our rules, and we do a week-long program for kids that maybe don't have access in the summertime. And so when we think about our elementary students, some may be middle school, we're looking at our historically underserved in STEM. We're looking at our inner-city or rural communities, our racially and ethnic diverse students, our social and economically under-resourced, and our students that are underserved in at Title I schools. That is our focus, and we are currently sitting at ten of the schools in Washoe County School District that are on a waiting list because we've already filled the thirty academies for this current school year. So that's Colonel Matthews, sitting in the picture, doing an Alka-Seltzer experiment with the kids. And so not only do we have like these structured, scheduled opportunities for students to see STEM careers, but every once in a while, somebody just walks through and then we put on some goggles and they get engaged. And so what's really nice is that they see that our military men and women are human just like them. And so we may ask them if they're smarter than the fifth grader, make them do a couple of puzzles and see what's going on, but they're definitely engaged. So our schools served this for last year. So we started in twenty twenty-one. Our school programming started with the Washoe County School District in twenty twenty-two. So we served approximately six hundred and thirty-one fifth-grade students in Washoe County School District last school year. Those schools are listed on your screen, everyone from Bailey Charter all the way to Rizley Elementary School. One of our testimonies that we'd like to share with you today is our teacher Tiffany Kaiser, because one Tiffany is never enough, so you need two, is our teacher from Glenn Duncan. Glenn Duncan was our very first school last year, and they came back this year, and they're also going to be highlighted in the National Starbase magazine that'll be coming out. And so we just got confirmation for that today, and so they will be honored as well. But I want to ask Tiffany Kaiser, if she could come up for a moment and just talk about her experience as a teacher, bringing her students to Starbase.
Welcome, Ms. Kaiser. And you better believe we're going to want to see a copy of that when they're spotlighted in that national publication.
Good morning. Okay. Good afternoon. So I'm Tiffany Kaiser. I teach fifth grade at Glenn Duncan, along with my other amazing partner, teaching partner, Megan Vietta-Cabel. So this is, as Tiffany said, our second year at Starbase, and I have seen like what a positive impact it has on the students after they attend Starbase for five weeks for both of the fifth-grade classes. As, I feel like I'm going to be parroting what Tiffany already said, but it really does bring science and STEM to life for the students because for each session, they're learning about and conducting hands-on experiments, engineering, math, ELA, science. Everything is integrated into every lesson that they do at Starbase. They're using coding, robotics, the computer-aided design, which the kids loved, and more, all of the things that Tiffany said. They're collaborating, they're problem-solving throughout the entire day, and those are skills that they really, really need to have in life, and it's so great to get that there at Starbase also. And it spills over into the classroom. We see it every day, improved collaboration between the students, teamwork. It's really great. And I intentionally put them in groups of kids that they wouldn't normally work with together, like not their friends. And so I feel like it helps kind of build and foster that teamwork with, you know, your friends, people that you wouldn't normally work with. They love science, and so when we have time for science at school, we are able to activate prior knowledge and refer back to what they learned in Starbase, which is really amazing. Or some of the kids will even raise their hand, remember when we did this at Starbase? So it's super high-level, what they're learning on the computer with, especially with the CAD, all of the coding, the robotics, it is giving them exposure to a lot of technology that they may not otherwise have at school and just in life. And they're always really excited to share about their experience when they go to Starbase with other teachers, or just talk about it with each other. And I really love that it's super encouraging for the girls in the class because it's not a typical field that, you know, girls typically tend to pursue. They really, 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 I asked them, what was your favorite part about Starbase? And all of them listed multiple experience, trebuchets, the coding, the robotics, but they also really, really loved meeting the active guard members, learning about their jobs, whether it was the fire trucks, the pilots, the emergency management. They loved, Ms. Bunting put on the hazmat suit, and it was amazing. And so it was really nice for them to see how those jobs are connected to science and STEM, and that a firefighter also needs to know science, a pilot also needs to know about science. And so they really loved that, they loved conducting the experiments, and they also overwhelmingly said that they loved the teachers. They loved Mr. Healy and Ms. Bunting, and they loved seeing Ms. Tiffany, and they loved seeing Ms. Tanika. So, and so we just really wanted to thank you at Starbase, but also we want to thank the Board for supporting science and STEM in our schools because it's super important, and we love attending Starbase.
Thank you. Thank you, Tiffany. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kaiser.
Thank you. So just moving along, because I know we've got a respectful time. To date, for this school year, we've served two hundred and sixty-nine students in Washoe County School District. We've changed a couple of schools and added some, some are returning. So our new schools this year will be Lois Allen and Echo Loader, as well as Smithbridge and Veterans are new to the list, returning our Bailey, Desert Heights, Glenn Duncan, Lemelson, Maxwell, and Rizley. And so we, our goal is to reach seven hundred and fifty students by the end of the school year. So that is what we are seeking to happen. So I just want to show you a couple other photos of some of our kids engaged, so they're not just sitting on computers, there's reading, writing, arithmetic, all the good stuff, right? But they are definitely excited about working together and collaborating. Up on the ladder, Ms. Bunting, our kids do an old, an old-school process we all used to do when you put an egg in a box and see if it survived. We actually put it in the seat of a plane and fly it across the room. And so students get a chance to not only fly it across the room, they build a budget, they work together, they collaborate, and then they see what their success rate is. So there's a full hypothesis and results in all that process. The Nevada National Guard youth programs, really for us at Starbase, is about a classroom environment that is welcoming and inclusive, a classroom environment that's engaging. We have indoor and outdoor engagement, and there's connection time. Our students connect not only with each other, but with our teachers, as well as other people on the base. We do follow the standards, objectives, and activities, and you all have a copy of that as well. Again, we are aligned with the Nevada Common Core standards for Starbase alignment. Again, we are aligned with the Nevada Common Core standards for Starbase alignment, and then our lesson objectives and goals are in there as well. So we provide you with the schedule so you can kind of look at what students go through throughout the day. The person that's missing today is the Adjutant General, General Berry. He is the Adjutant General for the State of Nevada, and he has a ball of energy and oftentimes disrupts our entire classroom when he comes in, but the kids love him. But what I can say about him is that he is about integrity, he is about community, he is about engagement, and he is about education. And so he is full-on support, as well as General Waters here, for education and Starbase for our students. So we're hoping to build a Starbase campus. I'm just going to start moving people out. They might not like me after a while, but it'll be okay. All right. So the other parts about STEM careers is our fire station. Our fire station is probably the most dedicated, consistent program on the base. Our students visit, every class that comes to Starbase visits the fire station day one. And so they don't just sit in the room, but our fire station goes through a full presentation in PowerPoint. Kids get on the trucks, they see the dynamics of what happens, they love the fact that there's a female firefighter there, and so they get really excited about that, as Ms. Kaiser mentioned as well. But they get a chance to get in the hangar, and you know, if they're lucky, when the president lands, they get to see some of the vehicles and trucks like Desert Heights did a few months back. Our STEM careers is also another part of an emergency management, so they learn everything about radioactive waves and communication. They get a chance to get on an actual C-130, it does not take off, but they do get a chance to get on the plane, and not just walk in the back of the plane, they get to sit up in the pilot's seats. They hear about the plans and the plotting that's necessary, and so they understand the level of education that's required and the level of engagement that's important for them. A new component that has joined is the Communications Department, and there's actually a kid playing the telephone game, that it does work. And so our Communications Department built an entire STEM project for kids to work on when they go and visit, and so they got a chance to learn and grow and engage. Starbase is an extremely important program for our students, particularly when you think about access at the elementary level. And 5th grade students looking, seeing, feeling, believing, thinking, and understanding that they are capable of engaging in high levels of STEM only puts them on the path for great success. So I just want to say thank you to Washto County School District. I want to say thank you to the Board of Trustees for having us, and thank you for the continued partnership. Our MOU is set to expire in 2025, so we'll be sitting down and talking about how we renew that. But we are also just thankful for the opportunity to provide high-end level access STEM to 5th grade students in Washto County School District. Thank you. Questions? Answers? I have them.
General Waters, did you want to add anything before any of my colleagues?
Yeah, I would add one thing. You know, this is operated at the highest levels of the Department of Defense in the Pentagon, and so, but it's not led by the military. It's actually led by a senior executive service member, which is a civilian general officer equivalent. This is not a recruiting effort. This is the realization within the Department of Defense that we have immense resources we can leverage to help the United States and help the education of the young folks. And we're only, we're very pleased, and I'd say very fortunate to have the staff we have not only at Starbase High Sierra, but throughout the state. So Ms. Tiffany, thank you for everything that you've done for our great program, and we will stay in contact with you, especially as we look forward to renewing that MOU.
Yes. And I am a civilian, I am not military, but I am a daughter of a World War II vet, so. Questions?
Thank you, President Smith. I will just lead off by saying thank you so much for being here. We appreciate this and for what you do. I've heard firsthand from teachers who are just dedicated to making sure that all of their students have this experience. And so we look forward to sitting down and discussing that MOU when the time is right. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Other questions?
Any questions?
So as a trustee, who do I contact to have a tour?
That would be that lady on the screen. And that's what I would add, is that we do want to offer an opportunity for the trustees to come out, make sure you all pass the background, just kidding. But we will offer an opportunity you all out to visit Starbase and see if you are smarter than a 5th grader. So but in all seriousness, we welcome all visits to come out and check out Starbase.
Other questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Young, thank you for your presentation. I think this is something very important for our community and for our underserved kids and Title I students. As a former Title I student, I know when I got into the military, I was intimidated by all the stuff that I learned. My daughter's fortunate that I was able to introduce her to these types of things, but it's good to know that individuals like myself as a kid have the opportunity to see these things and experience, especially related to STEM. I think it's going to help them significantly to move forward and understand when they come in contact and not feel intimidated and afraid of STEM, whether it's careers or technical careers or school, what have you. So thank you very much, and I like seeing these numbers, 631 students with a goal of 750 this year. That's 750 lives that you really impact, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, seeing the other lights, thank you so much for coming. Your program is so impressive, and we cannot be successful in our mission for providing a high-quality public education if not through partnerships like yours. So thank you so much for what you're doing, and thank you for sharing your story with our entire community.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you. All right, so that closes item 4.02, and now we will move on to item 4.03. This is the adoption of the Washto County School District Board Resolution 23-020, a resolution recognizing November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month. This is an item for possible action. We're joined today with our presenter, Fawn Hunter. Fawn is a Program Specialist with the Native American Education Group, and we welcome you, Fawn. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, School Board members and audience. My name is Fawn Hunter. I'm with the Washto County School District. I'm the Indian Education Specialist. I do want to apologize this today for speaking before any of my elders on this matter. We are talking about Native American Heritage Month, and I'm a member of the Duck Valley Paiute Shoshone Tribe. My ancestors also come from the Washto Tribe in Nevada, California, Pitt River Paiute Tribe, and the Pima Lake Paiute Tribe. Today, I'm going to share with you some of the amazing culture that is happening within our Washto County School District community, our program, and within our Washto County Schools. Native American Heritage Month here, as you see, is to recognize the culture, traditions, and achievements of our nation's original inhabitants and their descendants, celebrate individuals who continue to shape our society and lead communities and impact our culture daily. The backstory, Native American Heritage Month was federally recognized in the 1990s. Today, Native American Heritage Month provides opportunity to learn and reflect on the treatment of individuals, indigenous people throughout our American history. Native Americans are proud of their homelands. As we're talking about the military, men and women serve in the armed forces at five times the national average within our Native American communities. We want to honor and recognize the achievements and the contributions of our Native American students and families when we're talking about our Native American Heritage Month. So it was great that I came after all the military stuff because it's kind of intertwined in what we're doing in our leadership and encouraging our students to go into our different programs. I encourage all to learn about the distinct and unique heritage of American Indians and culturally responsive manners. All school personnel should have an understanding or awareness of Native American tribes within their area to help relate effectively in Native American students and their parents to have those conversations. When we celebrate this month, Native American Heritage Month, I also want to remind our education system that we should be interweaving the education of our Native American tribes and celebrating individuals throughout the school year, and not just in this month, even though we are honoring our Native Americans in this month. Our Native American Culture and Education Program exists to meet a unique academic and culture needs of our American Indians in our program. We, I want to celebrate our program, our staff. We have an NYPD grant, the Native American Youth Community Project Grant. I'm the project coordinator. We have Denise Miles, who's here, the NYPD coordinator, or I'm the director, she's the coordinator, my apologies. Brenda Chavis, who is also here, NYC Program Analysis. We have Heather, Naomi, Lauren, Monica, who are our Native Youth Advocacy Specialists here with us today. We have on-call American Indian Culture Educational Trainer who comes in and does some of our cultural events and activities with our students throughout the school year. Other staff, we have the EL Cord Grant that is supporting us in our language program. We have Gracie Dick, who's here with us today, who teaches some of the language in our schools. We have Title VI Indian Education Grant, which I'm the project director for that grant. We have Macario Mendoza Corillo, who is our Paiute Language Specialist in some of our schools as well, who's supported by that grant. And we also have our four cooperating teachers. We have Mr. Bonham with us today. Thank you for joining us. That's in that classroom supporting our Paiute language. Title VI also has a parent advisory committee. We have Terry Larson as our chair, Ryan Rogers, who's our vice chair, and he's also in the audience today with us. We have Mr. Anthony Abbey, Martin Hefner, and Stacy Burns. They represent our PAC, so they determine how some of our funding's spent and what they want to see in the district when it comes to our federal grant guidelines. We also have the, some of the things that we provide through our grant are the back-to-school backpacks, summer school, reading books by Native authors, school supplies. We host cultural activities with our new grant that we have. We take students on college tours, providing one-on-one mentoring with our students in our middle and high school. We pay for AP and IB courses, and we support our families in outreach events such as, and with other resources, sorry about that. And some of our highlights, which you already know, is a land acknowledgement, and that's our community involvement by you all, the board. That was a big achievement for all of our leaders that came out and our tribal leaders that came out and voiced their concerns during that time and their appreciation of the land acknowledgement. Despite the decades of oppression, violence, and relocation and forced assimilation, Native American Alaska Native individuals and families continue to be resilient and thrive. And this is some of the examples through our school district on how our communities are thriving and our students. We also want to, Native Americans draw strength from land and deep cultural roots, traditional ways, living in places and building relationships in a collective, collectively successfully together as far as our relationships and what we do as a collective, together in activities. I also want to say that within that, our strong shared values and sense of identity, accountability, and responsibility, and resilience also comes with healing and wellness. That plays an important role through everything that our, some of our families and students have been through with that. That means community, culture activities, and the healing comes through ceremony, prayer, and other activities that we're doing with our students, such as you see here. So some of these activities were through Dean DFS, which we collaborated with. We had college visits at UNR, Western Nevada Community College, TMCC, and other colleges within the state of Nevada. This was within our first-year grant of NYPD. We're on our second year, are entering our second year. Second year means out-of-state. We'll be taking some of our students out-of-state in the college tours and visiting surrounding areas. With this, I also want to talk about our connection with our language program too. We also have language that's connecting us, that's very strong within our community. Our language that you see on the bottom, they have puppets. We also have a strong collaborative effort with Reno Sparks Indian Colony, and they bring their language program in and communicate with our language specialists so that way it could be a successful program. Some of the activities you see here up on there are our first-year NYPD, some of the funding that was also used, our ribbon skirt making. We had some of the girls come into our Riggins Court community area and bust them in, had lunch, and they all got to make their ribbon skirts with us that day. We also went to the museum, experienced some of the culture within the museum. They got to enter the basket vault, which is very precious. All of our ancestors' baskets, or some of our ancestors' baskets live in that vault. So we were granted the opportunity to visit that vault and see the baskets as well. So these are more pictures of continued activities that we continue to do within our Washto County School District schools, or within our communities to support our students. We also have Student Voice up here. Some of our students got into Student Voice this year, which was very great, and that's another part of what we're trying to collaborate with Student Voice. We also have, most of our goals with NYPD live in Goal Five. It's, we have 700, or 70 seats that we purchased from DFS as far as having some of our students go through Dean's, future scholars through UNR and TMCC. And of course, I can't forget our Paiute Language Bowl that happens every year within our school district. We have our schools that compete against each other, as well as our community. We invite community members out. So this year, we had McDermott, and we also had Yerington come out and join us in the bowl. So, and we have our elders there in the front with us that always support us and our language teachers on the side. And this video is part of our community effort, and it's with Natchez Elementary School.
I've been here since 1997, and we've been doing the Native American Month Powwow since then. It's great. It's awesome to have the community here, the kids enjoying it, and they were all excited today, waiting for parents to come and get them dressed. And so it's a great, it's a great day today at Natchez. We are probably about 95% Native American students. We like having the Powwow during the school day so that all the students may participate. Whether they have regalia or not, they're welcome to participate.
Well, it's fun, and I like to do it because I get to meet new people. Well, it's really important because if we lose our, if we don't do this, then we might lose our tradition, our dances.
Powwows are actually a celebration that we are still here, because there's a lot of non-Native people that don't even know Native Americans exist anymore. So when we have these types of gatherings, it just fills the children with pride and who they are, and to show the world that we are still here, we're still thriving, we're into education, and teaching our children a good way of life.
I think it brings the culture alive to the students. They may not live in a home that has, lives by tradition or practices cultural activities, what have you. So it gives them a chance to learn those things here at the school, and we're grateful that we're able to do that with our community programs, with our community members that are willing to come in.
Our communities continue to support our students. Natchez has a full week of Native American Heritage Month that they celebrate, and so they're wearing their, I believe today is Wear Your T-shirt that has some type of design on it, but they have a designated day every day. Some of our other schools that we see in our, still are celebrating as well, we saw Shaw Middle School had some posters in there on their lockers and recognizing some of our Native American people that have come before us. So it's just recognizing our individuals that have come, are past, present, and our future to come too. And I just want to thank the board for their time. I want to thank Delisa Crane and Dr. Paula Marca, our two big advocates of our support team, and thank you all today.
Thank you so much, Fawn. So Trustee Mayberry will be reading the resolution in a moment, not quite yet, but before he does that, I'd like to invite Superintendent Enfield to share some news.
Thank you very much, President Smith. I want to thank Fawn Hunter and everyone who works in our programs here. This is such important work, and I think it's very much a point of pride for us in the Washto County School District, that we are deeply committed to it. But I am going to take a moment of personal privilege and use this to honor you, Fawn, because JJ has nominated you for a Ducky Award. And for those of you who are not aware, any staff member can nominate another staff member for a Ducky Award for going above and beyond to deliver on our promise to know every student by name, strength, and need so they graduate prepared for the future they choose. So Fawn, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read this very briefly, and then after we do the resolution and the photo, you and JJ and I will get a photo together as well, okay? I would like to nominate Fawn Hunter in the Department of Native American Education for a Ducky Award. She pulled together a beautiful event for the first reading of the land acknowledgement, true. She brought together so many chairman and elders from various, from numerous tribes in the area, as well as bringing students to provide their perspective on the education. They were part, the education there a part of was so impressive. I'm so glad she and others sang the flag song. It is always a highlight. She was given direction to make it a celebration, and she knocked it out of the park. And you do that each and every day on behalf of our children and families, Fawn, and we are deeply, deeply grateful for the way in which you lead and educate us all in how we can better serve our Native youth and families. So thank you.
Trustee Mayberry, will you please read the resolution?
Sure, I'm honored to, Madam President. Thank you very much, and thank you to our staff that serve our Native students and in all that you do, lifting them up and celebrating them. Thank you, Fawn, for coming as well. Whereas the Washto County School District is committed to celebrating and affirming every student by name, strength, and need, and providing culturally sustaining environments where our diverse student population can learn and thrive. where our diverse student population can learn and thrive. And whereas the Washoe County School District includes more than three thousand students who self-identify as Native American, serve nearly a thousand students through our Native American Culture and Education Program, and has one hundred and thirteen tribes and nations represented within our district community. Whereas our Native American Culture and Education Program works with our local sovereign nations, including the Washoe Tribe of Nevada and California, the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, and the Reno Sparks Indian Colony, and partners with families both directly and through our parent advisory committee to ensure that our Native American students have culturally enriching and sustaining supplemental programming and services. Whereas through the commitment of everyone involved in the Native American Culture and Education Program, the district now offers Paiute language classes at three high schools where students have the opportunity to receive world language credits to satisfy graduation requirements and learn about Northern Paiute history and culture. Be it resolved that the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees commends the Native American Education Department and Parent Advisory Committee for their work to create opportunities for students to connect to their heritage and succeed academically. Be it further resolved that the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of Native American communities whose ancestors are the original indigenous inhabitants of what is now the state of Nevada and recognizes November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month in the Washoe County School District, 2014, the fourteenth day of November 2023. Thank you."
Thank you so much, Trustee Mayberry. JJ, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right, I will bring it back to the board.
I would like to make a motion.
Um, hold on one moment because it sounds like Trustee Church spoke over.
A small lady, raise her hand.
Okay. Sure, absolutely. Let's get a little card for you, which you can fill out after. Just come on up now, and we'll do the public comment, and then we'll complete the card right after. Thank you so much. No, no, that's... I would not have caught that because I defer to JJ, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. Naga Nenian Crisite Clouet, and I'm one of the teachers at the Reed High School, and I'm working with the... With Mr. Bonham and Mr. Mendoza over there. And I find it very rewarding to be working, you know, with the students. I worked last year also, and so our... My position is the Paiute Language Specialist, and so I have the traditional knowledge, also the tech knowledge, the traditional ecological knowledge. I grew up with the language, the Paiute language, and in Ma'yeror, I speak the Paiute language. And so I find it very, very rewarding and working with, you know, Fon and, you know, the rest of the team. You know, it's... We make a good team because we're working good together, and she understands us. So anyway, that's really great. And the thing that I guess I wanted to, you know, talk about, I guess, would be, you know... And I'm really glad to hear that you guys, you know, really appreciate Fon. And then... But the funding, you know, you know, for our class, our classes, actually. So anyway, because Mr. Mendoza, he goes over to Spanish Springs and over to Worcester. He's got two classes over at Spanish Springs. And... But we barely have enough money, you know, funding, you know, for our program. And being, you know, the first people, you know, in our area, you know, we do need to branch out more. You know, we barely have enough money to run the program right now. So anyway, if there's any way that, you know, you guys can go over the budget or add to the budget for our program, that would be... That would be greatly appreciated by us and the students because right now, we can't really do a lot for the students, you know, in the program. And they're also willing to learn, and they're very respectful, you know, in the class. And the other thing, too, is the... Instead of having, you know, the Native American Month of November, you know, it should be year-round, you know, instead of, you know, having it just for the one month. So maybe in the future, you guys can do another resolution, you know, you know, having... Or stating that, you know, that it should be year-round because of the first people. And I'd like to say happy Veterans Day to our veterans here. And anyway, I have a lot of veterans in the family, too.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, ma'am. Yeah, the three minutes is up, but we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Diane Nicolet, I'll defer to you.
I would be honored, and I hear the year-round and not just a tour approach. Thank you for that. I move that the Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolution 23-020, a resolution recognizing November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month.
I second.
All right, motion by Vice President Nicolet, seconded by Trustee Woodley, seeing no lights on. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Let's get you up here. All right, everyone. So as our guests depart, we will go ahead and close out item 4.03 and move on now to item 4.04. This is the adoption of the Washoe County School District Resolution 23-021, a resolution recognizing National Apprenticeship Week and the importance of career and technical education. This is an item for possible action. And so as one of our presenters today, we have Josh Hartzog, our Director of Signature Academies and Career in Technical Education. He's joined by other guests, Rob Benner, the Secretary Treasurer of the Building and Construction Trades Council of Northern Nevada, and also Brian Prather, Building and Construction Trades Council of Northern Nevada President and Training Coordinator for Operating Engineers Local Three. We are also joined by Diane Vanderwell, Spark City Councilwoman and Building and Trades Recruiter, also with the Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association, and Wendy Colburn, the Communications Director for the Building and Construction Trades Council of Northern Nevada. Thank you so much for being with us, and Josh, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Smith. Greetings, esteemed board, Dr. Enfield, President Smith. For the record again, Josh Hartzog, CTE Department and Signature Academies. It's my privilege once again to stand before you all and introduce a proclamation to recognize National Apprenticeship Week across our school district, as well as the importance of our CTE programs. As everyone else has been referencing, this resolution aligns very well with our WCSD promise of preparing all of our students for a future that they choose, as well as goal number five of empowering all of our future... All of our learners for their futures. If I could take just a moment to give you a bit of a refresher on what we've been doing in the CTE community to point our students in the direction of apprenticeships, and we're joined by many more of our esteemed industry partners here representing our apprenticeships. In terms of our CTE programs that point towards apprenticeships, we, of course, have CTE construction programs first off. We have construction programs at four of our comprehensive high schools. Those would be Galena, Sparks, McQueen, and Worcester. And then we also have a construction program at our district-sponsored charter school, the Academy for Career Education, or ACE High School. Between those five programs, we have about four hundred and fifty students enrolled, which is about a five percent increase from the previous year. So all of those programs are fairly healthy and rolling along well. And then, of course, a reminder, we are bringing on another construction at Debbie Smith, which is going to be opening in school year 2526. So very robust program offerings across construction. Then we have metalworking programs at Galena and Worcester and Reed. Those metalworking programs have about four hundred students, which is a slight downturn from the previous year, but again, still relatively healthy. And then lastly, we have welding technology programs at the Academy of Arts Careers and Technology, as well as Reed, and that's it. So those two programs have about one hundred and ten students, and those are up by about a handful over the previous year. So all that is to say, in terms of our CTE programs that align with apprenticeships, we have about a thousand students in any given year in those programs. So when we talk about shop classes and skilled and technical classes, those programs are alive and well in our school district. In terms of moves that we have been making specifically to point our students towards apprenticeships as viable post-secondary education and career pathways, one of the things that our department does is coordinates regularly with the Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association, or NACA. One of our most recent collaborations of which was Construction Career Day, which we co-coordinated with them on October thirteenth... We're not in December yet. On October thirteenth, we co-coordinated with them in welcoming about a thousand middle and high schoolers from across our district, as well as our rurals, having students from middle and high school engage with dozens of industry professionals in all sorts of hands-on activities related to anything from fabrication to metalworking to masonry to excavation. A special shout-out and thank you to our board members who were there, especially Trustee Nicolet. I think maybe Trustee Westlake may have been there. Okay, I'm glad I didn't miss ya. And then, of course, President Smith, want to shout you out especially. We want to thank you for all of your support and advocacy for our skilled and technical programs. Your support's very much appreciated. Another thing that we are doing in the apprenticeship space is our department has been working in close collaboration with the Capital Projects Team, as well as Q&amp;D Construction and Van Wort Bagatti Architects to provide or structure a monthly job shadow opportunity for students from the construction program at McQueen. So about eight to ten students on a monthly basis get on a bus. We provide the supervision, and they go over to the Debbie Smith Career and Technical Academy construction site. So we are not wasting that opportunity on a monthly basis. They are walking the grounds, an active construction site that they are walking and getting to interact with industry professionals and see firsthand every phase of that construction. So that's pretty exciting. It's been a lot of work. A special shout-out to our coordinator, Kathy Smith, who's put in a lot of work coordinating and effort. And then lastly, most excitingly, before I turn it over to our industry partners, we have been working with NACA for the better part of three years, securing a rather sizable grant award from the Nevada Department of Education to fund the implementation of what is called the Multi-Craft Core Curriculum, or MC3. And that is a pre-apprenticeship curriculum that directly ties into our construction programs and gets our students, hopefully, the industry expertise and the certification that they need to be able to get at or near the front of the line to secure an apprenticeship after they graduate from high school. Because really, a reminder, when we talk about apprenticeships, they're basically scholarships. They are highly competitive, they're highly professionally based, so to get our students closer to that goal after they graduate is a big move for us. Lastly, because it ties into our strategic plan, we had thirty-five students get welding certifications last year across all of our programs, and a hundred and fifteen get their OSHA ten-hour safety certifications. So we're continuing to build out the certifications that we want our students to acquire as well. So with that, I will get out of your way unless anybody has any questions for me before I turn it over to our industry partners.
I do have a question. Thank you.
Certainly.
And not that we're not doing enough, because you know how I feel. We're doing fabulous work. Our students are very blessed. So are the industry... The industry that they're going to go to. They're very blessed. If you could add a program, snap your fingers and add it, what would it be?
In this space or generally across CTE?
What do we need?
I'll punt a little bit, but no, this is my authentic answer. I'm excited about a practical nursing program that we're bringing online at Debbie Smith. As I described to you, we're fortunately fairly robust in terms of our skilled and technical programs, which is what we're here to recognize today, but I'm very excited about especially a practical nursing program that we're bringing online at Debbie Smith. I think when we talk about industry need across all of our medical programs, that's going to be new to our district, so I'm especially excited about that. If I have a magic wand, there's like four or five other programs that I'd like to talk about, but we can talk about that offline, but that comes to mind first and foremost. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I will turn the mic over to Brian Prather from NACA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Mr. Prather.
I'd like to thank the trustees in there for having us in and recognize the apprenticeship and the programs that we represent. And I'm Brian with the operating... Or with the Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association, representing all the crafts and trades that are here in Northern Nevada. As you know, a lot of the apprenticeships are here to help the underserved, color, people with disabilities, anything else like that, to give them an equal leg up in the economy and workforce. As we move forward, you know, the apprentices start out in each of these programs anywhere from eighteen to twenty-three dollars an hour plus benefits and retirement. That's nothing out of their pocket. It's a complete earn while you learn strategy. This has been a form that's worked for eons of years. I'm also a graduate of that program, and some of the benefits are nine out of ten of their graduates stay in our industry, stay in here, and they have jobs, full-time jobs and careers after they graduate. So they're set and ready to go. The only requirements, high school diploma or a GED, which all the crafts and trades will help them get as soon as it comes to... Doesn't have that. They have to be over eighteen, obviously, but that's all we require, and we'll start them out on a career path that they can make good wages to support their families and themselves as they go in through life. Currently, we have about a thousand apprentices in Northern Nevada, and that's kind of my area. So we are training and upgrading everybody we can, and we're scalable. There's nothing that's going to slow us down. The more work that's out there, the more we expand. We have no overhead, we have no stopping point. Our apprentices train with some of the greatest journeymen that are out there with their crafts and their trades, learning each skills and the tricks is the way they go through the programs. As we know, we're getting to an aging workforce. So we need to replace these workers, and we lost a lot during the pandemic, we lost some during the housing bubble. So we're always behind the eight ball a little bit on some recruiting and things like that. I can say from my program that this year has been phenomenal for applicants and work. We went from ninety-two apprentices to a hundred and seventeen in my personal program, and I know the other programs as well have went up very, very well. I don't have a PowerPoint, but I have my apprentices, some of the apprentices with me, if you guys will stand up. So these are the... I'm going to put Mr. Jordan Snorkenberger on the slot a little bit, let him tell him a little bit about his experience. Let me tell him a little bit about his experience with the apprenticeship.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me. Yeah, just a little about it. Brian and the team over at our apprenticeship have been awesome. It's awesome to be able to learn while we work and all that good jazz set us up for retirement and, you know, get into the trades. I personally, like, I have a degree from the University of Nevada Reno, and I still ended up here. So if that tells you anything, it's a great program and a great thing to get the kids into. The earlier the better. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Mr. Benner.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. Thank you for doing this. I just wanted to come up and just say thank you for the continued partnership we've had with the building trades in the Washoe County School District, has meant a lot to us to watch Construction Career Day grow over the years. And just want to say thank you to Josh Hartzog and Kathy Smith for working with me to secure that $560,000 in funding through ARPA, which we got through our IFC, to implement our pre-apprenticeship program here in the Washoe County School District. One of the biggest questions we always get when we'd go out to career fairs or go talk to classrooms, you know, was, you know, teachers or counselors would ask us, "How do we give our students a leg up to get into your program?" Because our programs are somewhat, can be somewhat competitive. One way to do that is through the MC3 program, the pre-apprenticeship, which will now be implemented into the Washoe County School District, and that creates the direct pipeline from the school district into the, into our, into our apprenticeship programs, into good-paying jobs, into good-paying careers that will set them up for life. So I'd just like to thank, thank you all, and yeah, happy apprenticeship week.
Thank you so much. Before I read the resolution, I just want to say personally that we're thrilled that we're growing our trades programs here, and I know that the MC3 program was years in the making. So what just came across as a relatively short and exciting update was really years and many people on a local, state, and federal level making that happen. And so when we talk about our promise around preparing students for a future that they choose, it is so important that we uplift and acknowledge the future-proofness of the trades. And so on that note, I will go ahead and I will read our resolution recognizing National Apprenticeship Week and the importance of career and technical education. Whereas 2023 marks the 86th anniversary of the National Apprenticeship Act, and whereas National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its ninth anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role apprenticeships provide in creating opportunities by allowing apprentices to earn while they learn and preparing a pathway to good, quality jobs and well-paying careers here in Washoe County and across the nation. And whereas the Washoe County School District is committed to providing opportunities for all students and recognizes the importance of career and technical education in preparing students for college and career options. And whereas apprenticeships provide a path for all qualified individuals, including women, youth, people of color, rural communities, justice-involved individuals, and individuals with disabilities to contribute to America's industries. And whereas the Washoe County School District recognizes apprenticeships as a proven and industry-driven training model that can build a pipeline into good, quality jobs in order to address our nation's pressing workforce challenges, such as rebuilding our country's infrastructure, addressing critical supply chain demands, supporting a clean energy workforce, modernizing our cybersecurity response, and responding to care economy issues. And be it resolved that the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees encourages students and families to consider apprenticeship programs as important career opportunities post-graduation. Now therefore, the Board of Trustees do hereby recognize November 13th, 2023 through November 19th, 2023, as National Apprenticeship Week in the Washoe County School District, adopted this 14th day, November 2023. Thank you. JJ, oh, thank you. JJ, do we have any public comment?
I have no cards.
All right. I will bring it back to this board for a motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolution 23-021, a resolution recognizing National Apprenticeship Week and the importance of the career and technical education.
Second.
All right, motion by Clerk Rodriguez, seconded very quickly by trustee Mayberry. Seeing no lights on, all right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries, seven to zero. Now you get to come up for your photo. Come on up. All right, motion by trustee Mayberry, seconded by Vice President Nicolette. Seeing no lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you all so much. And that also closes Section 2. And now we'll move on to Section 3. We have an unusual number of sections tonight because we have a finance item tonight. And so this is going to be Item 3.01. It is the Discussion and Acceptance of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, also known as the ACFR, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023. This is an item for possible action, and we have several presenters with us. We welcome our Chief Financial Officer, Mark Mathers, our Controller, Martin Williams, and our external auditors, Jeff Jensen from Crowe LLC and Moran Murphy, also of Crowe LLC. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, Mark Mathers. Before I turn it over to our external auditors, Crowe, who've done a great job this year, again, I just wanted to kind of, again, tee this up for them. As you all know, state law requires local governments prepare an annual comprehensive financial report. This document that's before you consists of our financial statements, notes to those financial statements that provide required disclosures, then various opinions from our external auditor and other sections that you might find useful, such as a statistical section and a management discussions and analysis, which is basically our summary in our attempt at layman's, you know, commenting of, of, of the financial activities for the year. So again, this is required by law. We're very proud to have completed the ACFIR by the required statutory deadline of October 31st, not having to ask for an extension this year. And for that, I do want to recognize our staff, Minnie Kapron, our Assistant Controller, and Martin Williams, our Controller, who are here to help answer questions that may arise as well. And so with that, I will turn it over to Jeff. Thank you.
All right, well, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing Moran and I a few minutes here to speak with you about the audit results for the year ended June 30th, 2023. We covered this presentation and more in detail with the Audit Committee last week. And so taking a high fly over here for you, and certainly we'll go through all 300 pages of the audit report there, but distilled it down into a couple slides. So we start with what we're responsible for as your auditors, and that is to form, or form and express an opinion on the financial statements, as well as related to compliance. Part of that is doing a risk assessment related to essentially what could go wrong in your financial statements, and then designing tests and procedures to ensure that we obtain sufficient audit evidence to render an opinion on those financial statements that they are free of material misstatement. We also take a look at internal controls related to financial operations of the district as part of our audit, and so we've completed those procedures as well. Our audit is a risk-based audit approach. We don't look at every transaction. It exists throughout the district throughout, for the whole year, but we certainly look at a number of them in many different areas. And, and again, all coming to a conclusion there that we obtain enough audit evidence to, to render our opinion on your financial statements. So our audit's done in several different phases. An interim phase where we look at internal controls and some of the compliance related to federal programs is done in the May and June timeframe. And then we're back in September to look at the actual numbers of the district and then complete the very large audit report there in the September timeframe and meet that October 31st deadline that the state establishes for you. And then before you know it, we'll be starting with the '24 audit here, so I'm sure Mark's excited about that. All right, and then on the other side, what is management responsible for? Management's responsible for the financial statements themselves and putting them together for us to audit. It's a collaborative process of us working with them through the notes and the different sections there to make sure that everything ticks and ties throughout all 300 pages of that document. We're also, they're also responsible, you as the district are responsible, for your compliance with federal and state standards, and then our job is to, again, come in and audit and render an opinion on that compliance. And then being responsible for establishing and maintaining internal controls that ensure that your financial statements are free of material misstatement and ensure that compliance with applicable standards are followed. I'm going to turn it to Moran for a minute here to take a couple slides.
Thanks, Jeff. So every so often, the GASBIE puts out new accounting standards to help promote consistency in financial reporting. So this year, the new standard was GASBIE 96, so subscription-based technology arrangement, so kind of IT licensing, that sort of stuff. If, if it was material to the district, then they would have added a right-to-use asset and a related liability on the balance sheet. However, after the district gathered all of the arrangements, they determined that it was insignificant or immaterial, so they did not implement the standard. As auditors, we kind of look at their assessment, and we either agree or disagree with that. And in this case, we did agree that it was immaterial to the district, so no implementation on that one.
So you go through all the homework there to prove out that it wasn't material to the district.
And then corrected or uncorrected misstatements. So there were none this year. So that sort of is talking about audit adjustments that we had to make, so none to report there.
So obviously, the numbers that we started with are the same numbers that are in your report today without any modification, which is good. Some of the other things we're required to talk to you about as your auditors is just that we did not encounter any difficulties in completing the audit. We didn't have any disagreements with management, and we're not aware of any other consultations with other accountants so that if we were talking about an accounting issue, say like GASBIE 96, and they disagreed with what we thought, and they pitted us against one of our competitors to try to change our opinion, and so that didn't happen as well. And we didn't have any significant or adverse events to, to bring to the board's attention, and obviously, we shared the same news with the Audit Committee last week. The different opinions that we did provide as part of this audit are your financial statements. You received an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion, the type of opinion you want on your audit report. And then federal compliance is the same. We did not have any federal compliance findings, so you have a clean opinion regarding federal compliance. Here's just some quick financial highlights for you. Again, just trying to pull a few numbers out of that big, thick report there that might be of, of relevance to, to you as a board member. Obviously, the district is a very large governmental entity there of several billion dollars. And there are some big pieces within those financial statements, most notably your net pension liabilities, your obligation to your retirees' pension, and then your OPEV liability, which is the health care for post-employment employees. And so those are obviously some of the larger numbers in your financial statements, but overall, positive financial results here for the district for the year ended June 30th, 2023. Just to bring a couple things to a close here, we had no reportable findings. So again, about as clean as you can get for your audit for this year, which is always good news to be able to share with the board. I don't think, no, we need to go into a lot of detail here on this slide, but again, there's been some interest in the past from the Audit Committee and from the board here as to what goes into your pension and your OPEV liability. Obviously, they're very big numbers, some of which is out of your control as you participate in, in your PERS and, and these different plans. And then just to close up our thoughts here, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. We had no audit adjustments. There were no findings. Management did a great job. We work with not only the, the finance team, but also folks throughout the district because of the amount of compliance work that we have to do. And so we appreciate everybody's help to be able to get through this process because it's a very quick wrap-up to be able to meet the state's standards there of October 31st. And it's good to be able to say that we achieved that once again this year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much to both of you, and then also to Mark Mathers and the finance team. This is not a small undertaking to do this process, let alone year after year, under Mark's leadership and the team, to have it come back clean. So this is not a small thing. I want the community and this board to understand that this is pleasantly unusual, and I just want to say thank you so much on behalf of the board to the teams that all made this happen. On that note, I see trustee Church, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you. Yeah, I've been, I've been involved in kind of a watchdog for local government agencies for many, many years, and this is just an outstanding audit on Mr. Mathers and his team's part and your review. It's not at all unusual when I go to other meetings that they find, and I don't, I have no background in accounting, but they find material this or misstatements, et cetera. And the fact that we don't have those is just an incredible thing. I did, I read this. I actually looked forward to this, and I did spot a math error, and it's already been corrected, and I see Mr. Mathers, so pat myself on the back. A few thousand math error on enrollment. But I want to comment on that, and it's not really your responsibility. You're just reporting the facts, but I will point out, starting on page 12, it talks about a last-year decrease of 1,200 students, So I just want to kind of put that on the record. Enrollment now at 60,650. So for us as Board of Trustees, that's an area of concern I think we need to look at. Second comment or question, more of a question. We don't have firefighters, but we have police officers, and they're covered by what's commonly called heart-lung. Is that incorporated in OPEB? I couldn't find that. Do you know what I'm talking about?
So thank you for the question, trustee Church. Actually, there was a bill to encompass our school police officers in the heart-and-lung liability category, and that bill did not pass. So heart-and-lung, that heart-and-lung liability, which is significant for other agencies, we do not have to account for.
Okay, very, very good. Thank you very much. And then somewhere in here, people ask, what's the budget of the school district? Where do I find that? Maybe Mark Mathers, or I saw you walking away. What do I answer them when they ask me that?
Yeah, what we do, because of the way our fund groupings are set up at the district, like all local governments, we don't provide a aggregate number in the ACFR, but we will for the PAFR. That'll be coming out by December 31st. So in that document, we do, for the sake of the public, because that's the popular annual financial report, provide that aggregate amount. So you will see that in the PAFR that comes out later this year.
Okay, explains why I didn't see it. And then another thing Mr. Mathers and I just commented on, apparently, the district determined that it was superfluous to include all the different schools and their enrollment and all that. We used to have that, I used to look at for that. It's no longer there because I guess it's not needed.
Yeah, it's just a follow-up. It is not required. And one of the things, when our controller Marty Williams started earlier this year, we sat down and we worked with Crowe to identify those elements of the report that are not required. And so over time, there's just been an accumulation of information that someone thought once upon a time was important or useful, and that is not actually directly related to our financial activities. And so we attempted to streamline the document, and we actually, I know it's hard to tell, but we did streamline it and reduce it by 50 pages because it had been getting a little bit unwieldy. So that was unfortunately one document or one area that got dropped.
All right. And once again, congratulations to your staff and also to the accountants. Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic. JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no cards.
All right. So I will bring it back to this body. Dr. Nicolet.
Thank you. I just want to say that I really appreciate that CFO Mathers and Mindy and Marty, your name has to start with an M to work in that office, clearly. For the time that you spent with me, I scheduled an appointment, about an hour and a half worth of really deep diving this document, and it's clear that you have a wonderful working and honest relationship. Crowe knows what they're doing, we know what we're doing, and we know how to work together. And I truly appreciate that because this is so very important, and you did it in yeoman's time. Two months, two months, and other organizations that have governmental organizations have more time than that. So we're pretty dang awesome.
Thank you, Madam President. Just real brief, Mark and controllers, if it was up to me, I'd say take the rest of the week off. Thank you.
All right, well, this is an item for action, folks.
I want to get the words correctly. My recommendation will be the Board of Trustees accepts the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023, as recommended by the Audit Committee.
I second.
All right, motion by Vice President Nicolet, seconded by trustee Woodley. I saw that gentlemanly approach, trustee Mayberry. Seeing no lights on for discussion, well, I do see Dr. Dye's light on, but I don't think she has a comment for the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you so much. Now, I don't have a plaque for you. I feel like we should also, we've been taking photos with everyone, but we'll just give you our dear and sincere thanks. All right, everyone. That is, that is the plaque. All right, so that closes item 3.01 and section three in its entirety. And so everyone, we've been at it now for just about two hours, so we're going to go ahead and take a brief break for 10 minutes. I will hit the gavel and bring us back to order at 4:05 PM. Vaping Prevention Strategy to Include a Cost Analysis of Vaping Detection Devices as Recommended by the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. This is an item for possible action, and we have some guests with us here, namely Scott Benton, the Chair of the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, and Catherine Loudon.
Thank you, Madam President. Superintendent and Phil, Board of Trustees, I am Scott Benton, and I get the privilege to serve as the Chair of the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. You tasked us as a board back in March, I believe, with understanding and coming up with an approach to vaping in our schools. I took it back to the commission shortly after, and we were thrilled and enthusiastic about the charge that was given to us. It gave us something to focus on. At that time, we were preparing for the safety forum that launched in May. Didn't get it into that safety forum, but proudly, we just completed a safety forum in October that vaping was the topic of, one of two topics of discussion. If we go to the next slide, the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission is comprised of so many community experts. Going back to goal three of the strategic plan, safety and belonging, and hearing the mission of the school district, having community involvement, it's no more impactful than it is at the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, where we have experts in law enforcement and juvenile services, we have mental health experts, nonprofit leaders, and we also have parents. And that perspective of parents is so important. And I will tell you, as we get through this and a recommendation is made, it wasn't easy to come up with a recommendation because we have such skilled experts on the commission. The commission received the presentation back on November 6th of current practices within the school district. We took that into consideration when we drafted our motion to the superintendent. The commission received a presentation from a vendor in our October meeting regarding some of the sensor technologies and what is available. The commission also requested some additional research into the advantages, disadvantages, and pitfalls that are associated with the technology available to us. On our next slide, the impact of e-cigarettes. Not only is it behavioral impact, but it has that health component as well. Hopefully, you've had the opportunity to hear Dr. Kukuland Calderon's presentation that he did at the safety forum on October 30th, but it's in fact impactful to hear that it's a public health crisis. And hearing that, the effects just aren't known yet, the long-term effects, and hearing And hearing a pediatrician in our community as an expert, seen as an expert across the country, it's impactful, and his willingness to collaborate any plan with us as a district, and more importantly, the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. So some of the things that we have been able to derive is the behavioral impact, the distraction and disruption from the classroom environment. Primarily, that comes from students are now feeling comfortable in at ease vaping in the classroom. They're no longer going to the bathroom to hide it. As we move into some slides, Catherine will show us some of the data that we were able to find and pinpoint to where these activities are happening. Again, it's normalizing the risky behaviors, and the co-use of cannabis creates the legal consequences. And then the health factors, the effects on student focus causes mood swings and memory loss, worsens anxiety and depression, withdrawal symptoms in addiction. We don't, we know that it has nicotine in there or any other addicting substance. The exposure to those harmful substances are similar to secondhand smoke. And then also the respiratory and cardiovascular issues. And before I turn it over to Catherine Loudon, one of the impactful comments that were made at our November meeting that I want everybody to understand is, the students are normalizing this behavior to the point where they're asking to include it in an IEP as a stress mechanism, or a stress-relieving mechanism. And so that, to me, is apparent, and not only as apparent, but as a community member, is profounding that we're normalizing, we as a community are allowing that to happen. And so I want to turn it over to Catherine Loudon for some data and some things that we were presented within November.
Thanks.
Yes?
Good afternoon, Superintendent Dr. Enfield, President Smith, and members of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. My name is Catherine Loudon, and I'm the Coordinator of School Counseling for the Washoe County School District. What you have before you is some of our vaping e-cigarette discipline data. As you can see, as a general rule, our vape and e-cigarettes have gone down slightly from previous years, but the information that we have are in that upper left-hand corner demonstrates only this school year thus far, so we're not quite sure how it will look as this year progresses. You can see also that restrooms are still the most common place where infractions occur, because it's a place where they can go, and supervision in a restroom is more difficult for our staff, as you may guess. So that you're aware that NRS 202.2491 is our tobacco vaping e-cigarette law for the state of Nevada, and NRS 453.544 is our substance abuse and controlled substances law. And I include that because our vapes often also have THC, or have also other drugs, including opiates and fentanyl and other things. So I include both those NRS, and when we're having discussions about this public health As Scott Benton mentioned, this is a disruptive behavior. It's a distraction from their academic program. It's a distraction from their activity, and sometimes students are missing class to engage in this behavior. The universal strategies that we have in place for Washoe County School District include our prevention, education, information dissemination, community collaboration, alternatives. We collaborate with multiple partners, including Join Together Northern Nevada, our area Substance Abuse Coalition, and our Washoe County District Health. We have embedded in our state and national health standards vaping and e-cigarette education and prevention, as well as other substance misuse prevention. Our board policies that we currently have in place are 5250, which is our alcohol, tobacco, and controlled substances for Washoe County School District for student prevention and intervention. We also had previously Administrative Regulation 1332 for drug-free workplaces as well, and 4214, because this is a public health issue for our students, but also for our staff. The Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, Dr. Kukuland Calderon, did mention in that virtual safety summit on October 30th, some of the health issues. And we are trying in our district to prevent delay and suspend substance misuse, but the perception of harm among our use is a challenge, and the availability of the vapes and vape devices, because of the smell of a vape, is not unpleasant, because the ease to hide with a device, I mean, sometimes a device can look like an ink marker or a computer piece, and many of you are nodding your head, so you may have seen that or have read in national news, information, or science journals. Our district has collaborated with our substance misuse specialist Cynthia Knoll and our area partners to implement a program called Catch My Breath in 23 schools. We also have the Life Skills Program, and Life Skills are a part of National Health Standards, and that's where we do some of our prevention. And the Mendez Foundation at the elementary level for Too Good For Drugs, at the middle school level, Second Step. These are things that are often delivered as a part of comprehensive prevention outside of health, so you can see those. You've heard some information that Stanford University has a free prevention toolkit. We are breaking that apart and administering that and working with that through some of our partners. Our Washoe County School District Wellness Department, Communications Department, Family School Partnerships, they're working to help us get messages out to parents. That's very difficult, because sometimes you'll have something where you'll be calling parents into the school, but we really need multiple strategies over multiple sectors, because the parents have to have dinner and sports and activities and help with homework. And so calling them into our schools to receive information is sometimes not the best way to get information out. So we try to deliver information through communications in other ways and in partnership with our administrators. We also collaborate with a group called Pave Parents Against Vaping and E-Cigarettes. So that's one of the things that we do, and share information that people are often not aware of, including the fact that secondhand smoke with vape and vape devices is also damaging and is a thing and an issue and a public health concern. We mentioned that sometimes there are THC concentrates and opiates and other drugs embedded into the, or infused into the vape. Our students, and we've mentioned this before to the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, receive felony violations for THC concentrates in a vape pipe. This is different than what adults would have, so that becomes also another issue. For our students who engage in use, some of the interventions that we have place, in place at other tiers, include, we have a Substance Abuse Intervention Program at Worcester High School, where parents and students can come in person to receive information. We also have, through a partnership with Join Together Northern Nevada, a virtual link to a vaping educational component, where they can also have an assessment and pass a test, which that, their score comes directly back to our office in the Counseling Department, and we share that with our administrators and our deans. Our school counselors engage in activity, as well as our other mental health professionals, school social workers, safe school professionals, to try to make sure that our students have resources. Some of those resources that we partner with the Washoe Health District and others in our community are cessation, so there is addiction issues that we are also dealing with when we're talking about vaping and e-cigarettes. And so there's my life, my quit, and we want to make sure that parents receive that information and that students know how to text the line or call the phone numbers and receive assistance, and then we can, through our programs, provide some cessation assistance. We also work on early identification and re-education, and some of our partners, such as Care Solus, help to disseminate resources to help with this health issue as well.
I think this is mine. Some of the needs and conclusions that we made as a commission is to look at the policy and maybe draft some revisions and send it over to the Board of Trustees, so that we can include some of the research that has been presented to us. Expanding the prevention program that we already have in schools, we have a great baseline that the school counselors have presented to us, and Catherine and her team, we want to expand that. Consider making mandatory health classes for middle schoolers. We know that it's a requirement for high schoolers to prevent and detect early on. We want to maybe capture that at the middle school level. Something that we've talked about in depth was the increased training for not only teachers, but for our administrators, what do we do with the information that is given to us? Parent workshops aligned with the strategic plan, a whole family support system is needed to address the problem. It can't be just the student wanting to do it, it has to be a family conversation. Increase the awareness of the legal consequences, as we just heard, it's a felony charge for a minor to be in possession of THC, but not an adult. So making sure that our students understand the legal consequences of ramifications behind that. Expanding our partnerships with community agencies to support the students and families is at the forethought of all of our thinking, and also the consideration in the use of vape detectors as part of the comprehensive plan. So the recommendation that came from the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission at our meeting in November is to recommend that the district administration strengthens current prevention efforts and develop a comprehensive plan, typo on our part, to combat the use of e-cigarettes vaping. This should include policy development, an information campaign for both students and families, and staff training on effective intervention. We also ask that the district administration should further review vape detection sensors to include the advantages, disadvantage, and pitfalls, as well as a cost analysis regarding potential installation and implementation. The recommendation came at no ease from the Commission. We were provided information on vape sensors and great healthy conversation around what does that really do? What are the pitfalls? We have not quite been able to dive into that, and so we want that to be a recommendation from the Board of Trustees, coming back to the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, giving us some opportunity to continue to work on this project. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you, Catherine, as always, for what you do. Scott, thank you, and thank you to everyone on the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. You know how much appreciation and respect I have for your work. I want the trustees to know that we have already been in conversation with Tammy Zimmerman and Adam to look at the feasibility, and as you said, the pros and cons, of vape detection systems across all of our middle and high schools. So we will be gathering that information and what a potential plan would look like to trustees and to the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. I think the two other things that you recommend, though, around policy, I'm going to ask that Sarah take that back to our legal team, to start looking at policy and what we might do in that, to bring back some policy for review. But I think this could also be an area for a community-wide campaign. You know, we need to reach out to folks across the community and do what I would call a saturation effort around the dangers of this. This can't just be a district-led communication strategy. And so I will talk with Michelle Anderson and her team, and along with maybe others in the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, about what something like that might look like. But we take these recommendations very much to heart, and I want to assure the trustees that we'll begin following up on them.
Thank you, and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you so much, Scott and Catherine. I mean, this is, this is serious, and I appreciate that you treated this with the seriousness that it deserves. And this is not to, I just wanted to throw a few things out there. It's not to say that we shouldn't do it or not attempt it, but, you know, kids, they have the attitude that they're virtually indestructible. So educating them and having, you know, policies in place, my concern is, is kids, they think that they, you know, have thousands and thousands of days ahead of them, they're virtually indestructible, nothing bad's going to happen to them. So that, that's just a little concerning, because that's just built into being a kid. The other thing, and I don't know if you got any information back on it, but the sensors, how sensitive are those sensors? Now, with the open bathroom floor plan, I imagine they could be put in each enclosed stall, but it looks like they're doing it in the locker room, which the locker rooms are large, unless they're right under a sensor in, in the gym, the gyms are large. Out on the school grounds, I mean, how do you have a sensor out there? So how, how sensitive are they, I guess? Is my question.
Thank you for the question, Trustee Westlake. To my understanding, the one vendor that spoke to us in October informed us that the sensors are pretty sensitive, but we can, as the administrator of that program, can relax the sensitivity on them. So it can be as heightened or as loosened as needed. To my understanding, it's a comprehensive sensor where it can detect whether it's smoke from a cigarette, or if it's a vape. So some of those things we haven't quite dove into, and we wanted to bring it back to the trustees, to send that back to us as part of a challenge.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
And Trustee Westlake, for the record, this was Catherine Loudon. So that would be something that the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission would be able to work on, because different vendors have different sensitivity, but also just an opportunity for early identification and referral, which then parents and students could receive that cessation and counseling and support information.
Thank you, Madam President. So I know teen smoking in the bathroom is nothing new, inspired me in public education for quite some time. So these are great recommendations, but I got to ask, like, how have veteran school administrators, or what have our fathers and mothers done before us to meet this obstacle? So, because this is nothing new. Was there any successes that they had? Or is there lessons they can learn? I mean, these recommendations are good, but this has been going on for some time. I don't know if that's a Martha Steeman or a question, but...
I think there's even a song about that, too.
I mean...
So for the record, it's Catherine Loudon. So yes, so we have recommended strategies, and there's a science around prevention. So there, you know, that not only our local Washoe County Health Commission, but our state and federal recommendations for prevention. We want to make sure that we raise community awareness and that we implement strategies for prevention. So supervision is a best practice strategy, prevention and education. So prior to the reduction in youth smoking actual cigarettes, we promoted a lot of education about that, increased the awareness about the harmful effects, and made sure that we were educating our youth about it. Also, that information dissemination about addressing the addiction. So for example, Join Together Northern Nevada has created a device where people who are trying to quit smoking can, you know, use an assisted device to help them that doesn't have vape in it. So our community partners doing things like that, media campaigns, radio, things that Dr. Enfield was mentioning about community-based approaches, in addition to that, are effective. That's why a lot of people who used to smoke cigarettes are not smoking cigarettes, and that's why we've seen some of those changes. Also, our administrators are getting involved as far as trying lots of different strategies. And they have brought this up many times as being a concern that they have and something that they want to address, and then providing those alternative activities. So something you can do besides substance misuse, including vaping and e-cigarettes, making sure that they have that, and then other environmental and community strategies.
Those sound amazing, and I can totally get behind those. So is it fair to say this is like a fair new, different approach than previous ones?
So I, the, putting together a comprehensive plan, so Washoe County School District is often tasked with prevention, have lots of youth problem issues and health issues. So having a directive from the Board of Trustees through the So having a directive from the Board of Trustees through the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission to make this a priority makes it something that then we can focus on. Having vape detectors is something that's very, very different. From counseling and social work department, we're looking at as providing us students not only with an opportunity for early identification and referrals, but also an opportunity for them to have a peer pressure refusal tagline that they can use if they're in a situation where they're being pressured to vape and they don't want to vape.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you for this work. I've, I've been championing this for at least a year now, and I appreciate that. This was a deep dive, and I know it was complex. I totally get that. I'm going to make a few statements, then I'm going to end with a question. First, I want to say thank you, Superintendent, for spurring on the policy review. I think that's extremely important. Thank you for that. I'm going to start at kind of a lower level here. Consider mandatory health class for middle schools. I think we should go all the way to our kindergartners and our preschools. Absolutely through, I think we've lost that through the years, that health class component for a lot of reasons, and so at this point, I say let's figure it out and make it happen, because health, well-being is just, we're finding it's extremely important. So let's push that all the way down to our preschoolers. The next thing I want to say is, again, thank you, Superintendent, for the community approach, because I can't tell you how many times I will go to a store and I will see what clearly appears to be an employee with the shirt, work shirt on, out there vaping, and my guess is they might be 16, 17, they're vaping with their 40-year-old colleague. So this is a community effort. We've got to, not hit, we have to embrace our workplaces so that we're, we're doing this together, to use that saying, "It will take a village." I will also say that I feel very strongly about continuing to grow our campus supervisors. We need them in all of our high schools, not just one, maybe three, maybe four, not sure how we work that out yet, and we maybe need to increase that in our middle schools, because we know that caring, informed, firm adults make a difference in our, in our students' and our kiddos' lives. I will say that in my research, which, and I've called upon many people to help me understand it, we do need to continue to look at vape detection and the efficacy. Cost, of course, but the efficacy, because there is no, there is no strong data yet to show. It, in fact, shows problems more often than not. Having said that, we could commit to a pilot project or two and prove to ourselves with our own in-house experts, whether we like it or we don't like it, whether it's useful or not useful. And we get our student voice involved. I mean, there's no better expert than our student voices. And then I will leave you with a question to help me understand. When you say early identification strategies, what does that look like? What are the components?
Trustee Nicolet, for the record, this is Catherine Loudon. We're just talking about that if a student is, has a vape device or an e-cigarette, that there's an opportunity for them to receive some education, there's an opportunity for them to receive cessation tools and information, there's an opportunity for a conversation with their family about this situation, to provide them with, with, with what they need to help them be more healthy and be less distracted from their academics.
Thank you, and I, I didn't, it's my fault, I didn't, I wasn't clear in my question. So all of that happens because Diane, you discover she's got a vape pen. What are the strategies for identifying that Diane needs those interventions?
So there could be lots of different strategies. There could be information from, from her, herself, sharing that she needs the support. There could be information from her peers that she's having issues or substance misuse issues overall. There could be identification through detection, through an administrator who is supervising or a teacher, and then finds out that they're using that device. It could be any number of different ways that we find out that they're, and then at that time, usually in Washoe County School District, we confiscate the device, we don't immediately suspend the student, we try to work on opportunities to begin again.
And I like that, even though sometimes I'm tempted to say, "You're out of here." That just gives them an opportunity to go somewhere else and do what they were doing. And so I appreciate that.
Trustee Church.
Thank you. Number one, I really appreciate what the committee does. Obviously, we should double your pay, and you, you, you know, which is zero, so we do appreciate everything you do. I, I think I'm inclined to agree with Trust, what I think Trustee Westlake, one foot words in your mouth, but I, what I think you said, it's not cost-effective, there's just too many issues on the vape detection, that whether they work, I'm thinking false positive, somebody's got to respond to each one, kind of like the detector on the airplane, somebody's going to break them or cover them or vandalize them. I mean, if the superintendent came back and said that's what she recommends, I would definitely have a look at that, but I'm just not hearing, kind of like you did, you didn't give us a definitive thing. I'm not hearing that that is a good avenue to go down. That said, I do like what Trustee Nicolet said, I think, about educating the younger kids before they become involved. I do have an opinion, having, because of my law enforcement background and my knowing, we all know somebody that's an addict, so, we, nowadays, you can't not know somebody. And you can't counsel them. You cannot counsel them out of being an addict. You cannot, you cannot tell me not to drink Diet Dr. Pepper. That's not a commercial, I'm not getting paid for that, but you can't tell, you can counsel me all day long, I'm still going to drink it. So I, I don't, so then what do we do? And I'm leaning, my only thoughts are teaching our police officers and even some staff in drug recognition. Again, having had family members, I think that once they're identified, having, and I'm talking not just the vaping, but you mentioned the THC, the fentanyl and that kind of thing. Some form of drug testing based on reasonable suspicion, run through lawyers, all that. But I guess that just summarizes my thoughts on it. But yeah, I'm just not hearing, it was definitely something to look at, but I'm not hearing now that we've looked at it, that it's, that it's just practical. Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith, and thank you again, Scott and Catherine. I just want to build on what Trustee Nicolet said. The campus supervisors, they do a couple things. They keep the students in the building where we can have eyes on where they're at, what they're doing, maybe some education classes for the teachers to, to educate them, to be more aware of what's going on. But when all this is said and done, I'm not for suspending. In fact, I'd like to see it go the other way, and you get more school time. I don't know if this is possible, but what happened to, you know, Saturday detention? And I realize that's going to come with the cost, but if you get caught vaping, you know, I love our parents, but some parents are overwhelmed, they may not understand that it's a super huge deal, and so they get called to the school, "Yeah, we'll put them in this, we'll put them in," but it's, it's not top priority. But if Johnny or Suzie has to do four Saturdays of detention, and in that detention, we have education going on against vaping, because the underlying thing with having the detection and then getting them help, which I am so for that, campus supervisors, more eyes on the student, but what happens if that fails? We, we need some bite. We need some bite in that, and you've gotten caught two, three times now with a device, now you're going to go to Saturday, Saturday school, and we're going to learn about vaping and the hazards of vaping, and what this is doing to your classmates, how it's disrupting them, how this can, you know, be a hindrance to your performance in school, all of those things. So that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Trustee Westlake. And I think, so what we're doing here in this motion is just telling them to do that in-depth work and verifying that this is what we're interested in, in them considering. So we'll go to Trustee Mayberry, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the work that you're doing as well. You said something at the very beginning, Ms. Betts, and I just want to make it crystal clear that we're not allowing vaping in IEPs, correct?
Correct. The statement that I made was that that was the seriousness of how easy it is to...
Yeah, and I also want to echo what some of my colleagues have said, including the superintendent. I mean, I, this, this really is far bigger problem than a school problem, or a school district problem, or a state of Nevada problem, or it's, it's a national problem, really. I mean, you know, they're, they're, they're marketing these kinds of products to kids just like they did Joe Cool with the Camels, when, you know, when a lot of us were growing up. So it's, it's clearly an issue. I, you know, you brought up Vice President Nicolet, student voices. I happen to have two student voices in my household, and they bring in a lot of additional student voices into the household. So I have a house full of, of young, young female voices. That's why I look the way I do. But we were talking this weekend about vaping. I saw the agenda items, so I wanted to get their input, and I asked them, and they're friends, you know, "What is vaping going on in your school? Do you, do you see it?" And, you know, there were a couple that said that they, they hadn't seen it. Some said that, you know, "We, we see it, it's in, it's in the restroom, down the hall, everybody knows it takes place down here." And then I actually had some, including one of my own children, said that they've seen it in their classroom. You know, and my response is, "Well, doesn't the teacher do anything about it?" And their response is, "Well, we, we don't think they, they see it," which I kind of find it hard to believe, but I mean, a puff of vape lasts a few seconds. So I'm, I'm, the vape detection system, I don't know how that plays into it, but I would, in fact, want to learn more about that. I think that is something I think that we, and take a closer look at, and teacher training. You know, and maybe teachers don't know how to handle vaping, particularly that, that may be taking place in the classroom, and even your own study, you know, indicated that it did. So those are my thoughts, but again, thank you for staying the course on this. It's, it's an epidemic, a health epidemic that I hope we can work with our community to, to reduce.
Thank you. JJ, do we have any public comment?
The board received an email from Abigail Nerver.
Thank you so much. All right, so, of course, welcome, Ms. Bianaca.
Thank you. I hadn't intended to speak on this, but I would like to thank Colleen for bringing up Saturday school. I went to Saturday school, I'm a product of Saturday school, and it worked out pretty good for me, I think. I appreciate that. I think the parents also need to suffer some consequence, and Saturday school might be the consequence. I mean, inconvenience everybody, especially those kids that don't drive. Surely there are laws that keep parents responsible for their children and some of their behavior. I'm sure, I'm sure there are. But beyond that, I also want to say misuse, the word misuse, I've heard you say that several times in meetings, and there is no such thing as misuse of drugs by children. Any use of drugs by children is abuse. And I say that not for, like, Benadryl, Tylenol, I'm talking about illicit drugs. Any kind of use of drugs by children is abuse. There's no, it's not misuse. What else was I going to say? I also don't think that we can, we can't minimize the fact that more teacher presence or high school principal presence in the bathrooms shouldn't be minimized. There should be a rotating assignment of an adult in every single bathroom during every class change, every lunch break. That was standard during my day, because we all, I didn't smoke, but a lot of my friends, it was, it's been going on forever. I'm old. That was, that was how it happened. It happened, it's been happening forever since kids could smoke, I'm sure, since when there were multi-room classrooms, when there was a place to go that wasn't that single-room classroom, I'm sure this has been going on. More adult presence, everywhere there is a place to do that, there should be more adult presence everywhere. I mean, I understand, oh, the other, my other point was, teachers are probably afraid to approach some of these kids. I don't know if you all go online to Facebook or, or Twitter and read what some of these teachers write about how afraid they are of their students and of some of the things that go on in the schools, but I do. I lurk, I lurk and read all these things that they say, and they're afraid. I would not be surprised if there aren't teachers that would be afraid to approach a child who's doing that in a classroom, especially if that child seems to be impaired in any way, shape, or form. I, for one, wouldn't want to be in that situation, given what's going on in some of our schools. Teachers have been abused. I would be terrified to approach a kid doing that in my classroom. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Victoria Meyer.
Hi, Ms. Meyer, welcome.
Hi, Victoria Meyer, for the record, and thank you for your presentation. I think there's some good information in there, and I appreciate the suggestions to the Saturday school. I like that idea as well. I think that eyes on these students is, is a good plan. We can also utilize, try and utilize, I think, parents, enlisting more parents and, and teachers. As Val was saying, I agree with what the former speaker was talking about, getting teachers in the bathrooms, getting parents in the bathrooms. You know, there, there's this idea of these open bathrooms that's been discussed here, and I understand there's a few open bathrooms in the school, some of the newer schools maybe, but I'm not sure, but these floor-to-ceiling rooms for these students, Lord, gosh, we can't even look under the stall to see how many legs are in there when we do this. And why would we spend the money on something like this when we should be putting it toward better, producing better results in math and science and reading and writing in our schools? I don't agree with this open bathroom plan and putting kids in four walls where you can't see inside. I think that's going to be a big problem, and I think it's a waste of money. You know, they already join up in the bathrooms and do things behind the stall doors, but at least you can get a peek under there if there's a parent in there. There's a lot of talk about data and detection devices, and I, I tell you, the best plan I heard was a school in Georgia where they had a lot of bullying going on, a lot of fighting in schools, and, you know, all the same issues, it's age-old, and their best detection device was a group of dads, was a group of fathers that went in there every morning and helped patrol the halls, became buddies with a lot of these students immediately, immediately. The violence stopped, the bullying stopped. Why are we spending money on more tech? We need to just do what we know is common sense. And, and there's been some talk of that here, and let's move toward that direction. Let's find, let's develop programs that reach out to the parents and get them more involved, and open the doors of opportunity for parents to come in. I, I'm a grandparent, five kids in the public school, grandkids in the public school, and I'd be happy to be there on a regular basis, and I'd be happy to head up a group that would enlist a bunch of parents to come and help out at all these schools and all these problems. There's a lot of problems, and we don't want our kids to be lost in the milieu of data and tech. We need their parents there.
Thank you so much.
That's all I have.
All right, colleagues, so let's bring this back here, and let's... All right, so bringing it back to this body, I am looking for a motion. We've had a long and robust conversation on this item, so I'm looking for a motion.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the development of a comprehensive vaping prevention strategy to include a cost analysis of vaping detection devices and implement, and implementation plan, as recommended by the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission.
Clarification, did you include the policy development?
Pause one sec. So we need to have a second before we can talk, but I believe that the overall presentation includes the policy development. That's part of the recommendation.
Could you, could you read the...
Pause for one second, just as a more, as a matter of order, I either need a second or it needs to die before we keep talking about it, everybody, okay? So do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Clerk Rodriguez, we have a second by... Okay, so we have a motion by Clerk Rodriguez, we have a second by Trustee Mayberry, and if I'm not mistaken, everything that they've just presented on is included in us giving them this direction, but let's get that clarified.
Please. So is the motion as the recommendation reads on the monitor?
The motion was that the Board of Trustees approves the development of a comprehensive vaping prevention strategy to include a cost analysis of vaping detection devices and implementation plan, as recommended by the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission.
That's what I thought. So it does not include the second sentence, this should include policy development?
Well, so it's, that's, that's the recommendation, though, so that's what we're telling them to do. All of those things that they just presented on, which would include the policy review, everything they just shared, is what we're authorizing them to do.
Okay, call me confused, I'm really sorry, but I did not hear the second sentence in the motion, and that is extremely important to me.
The second part of the motion states, as recommended by the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, which is.
That's correct. Trustee Woodley is correct.
The policy includes looking at all the things that we mentioned.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any comments that we have not already covered? Trustee Church.
So to clarify, I don't think that was the correct answer to what Trustee Westlake said. This is limited to a cost analysis of vaping detection devices. My opinion, and what I thought I heard, maybe I didn't, what I thought I heard was that it's really a waste of staff time, it's a waste of Safe Schools Commission time, it's a waste of superintendent's time. My gut is that it's not worth, we have bigger eggs to fry, we have more important issues than limiting it to a cost analysis of vaping detection devices. I think that's a dead, dead horse, and I just can't support that. I think we, this, the entire motion is just a non-starter with me. Again, I want to look at things that aren't legally within this motion that I've mentioned, but I don't think those are legal because they're not on the agenda. So, yeah, this is, I think, a no, because it's just not, I think we already discussed it, and it's just not practical.
I think that we're being a little too literal here. It says to include, not only to include. I believe with the way that this was written is that it signals to the community that we are going to be looking into it, because regardless of what the commission eventually finds and recommends to us, we hear from a lot of community members about, did you or did you not look into vape detection? So I have no idea what the commission's going to come back with, but this just signals that it will include that, but it is not solely around that. They're going to do a full, wide-ranging review of all the aspects of this, and then come back with a comprehensive recommendation that includes everything that they just presented on. Again, I believe that this just signals to the community and the motion that detectors are something that we will look into, because so many people ask us about, have you looked into vape detection? And so now we'll be able to say yes.
And may I just offer, President Smith, that we actually do have at least one school that has already invested in vape detectors. So we have some examples to look at for how well it's looking. I think it would be irresponsible for us not to look into that and come back.
Can I clarify, though? I'm really confused.
The motion, it's, so it's this motion right here. Everything that we were just presenting on is they're going to gum, and they're going to do a full, thorough review of all the things that we just talked about, and then they're going to come back to us based on what they feel is best and what they'd like for us to implement.
Okay, but what we're doing is we're sending it back to the commission. Is that specifically in the motion? I didn't hear it, maybe it's me, got my hearing aids in. Does it say, refer back to the commission?
Yes. That is, that they're the ones that are going to do it, and it's as recommended by the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, so staff and the commission will be doing this afterwards.
Staff and the, they're, well, we're, so can I hear the, can I hear it again? I just want to make sure we get it right.
Sure, of course. I think it's the same motion that we have here, and if it, if it's helpful, we can always vote it down and then read this one up here, but it's all the same thing. Like, it's, it's for them to go back and to do this work, it authorizes staff to do the research on it, because really, it's our staff that works with the commissions, and then they will set upon this work and place it as a priority, and actually come back with a full recommendation.
Once again, Madam President, nothing in there says we send it back to the commission. It says, we approve a development of a comprehensive vaping prevention strategy and cost analysis of vaping detection. So that implies to me that we're sending it to staff, that we're taking it away from the commission, and we're giving this to staff on top of everything else on their plate.
Well, I mean, staff is going to be doing this, so, I mean, staff is how all of our commissions and committees work. So here's the thing, I'm going to call for a vote, and for everyone that is a no, you can vote that way, everyone that is a yes, you can vote that way. If the motion does not advance, then we can absolutely come back and rebuild something. I don't personally feel as confused about this, but let's see how the vote goes, because we have a first and a second, so let's see how it shakes out. And by the way, we have to do that, because that's just the order of things, and then depending on how that vote turns out, we'll go from there.
And may I, I have another comment. I will vote no on that motion, simply because it is only one component of the very strong and powerful and important recommendation. It's only about vaping. I could, I could vote yes on it if I had an assurance that we would make another motion that has to do with policy, information campaign, et cetera. As this one stands, that's just vaping. That's, that's only a small portion of what needs to happen.
So what we can do is, if the original motioner and the second are open to it, there could be a friendly to add that second sentence, which is, this should include policy development and information campaign for both students and families, so on and so on, and all the way down. So there could be a friendly that builds onto this with those additional sentences, and we can do that in this motion right now.
I would be more than happy to do that if legal says it's okay.
Well, you can't, because we have our original motioner, and we have our second, so I will ask our original motioner if you are open to a friendly amendment that begins with the second line, this should include policy development and information campaign, so on and so forth.
I want to be there for you, Vice President Nicholas, but I think it's pretty, it's there, so.
It's not there. It's not there.
Okay. Okay, do we have anything we have not already talked about?
I think it might clear some stuff up. Maybe, my question?
Absolutely. Ask your question, and then I'm going to call for a vote, everybody, okay?
Well, my question is, is when it comes back, we don't necessarily have to put it through exactly as it comes back, like the discipline policy, how we, how we broke it down and kind of retooled it, can, when the recommendation comes back, are we able to pull things out, or say we want this added in, or this strengthened as per policy, how we want the policy to be?
Yes.
For this? Okay, so we still get to.
Okay, so we have a first by Clerk Rodriguez, we have a second by Trustee Mayberry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries five to two, I believe, yes. Motion carries five to two. Thank you so much. Okay, that closes item 4.05, and now we will continue on to item 4.06, and this is an approval to move forward with single point of entry and secure perimeter pilot projects at Robert McQueen High School, Damani Ranch High School, and Sparks High School, and the project to install security film on elementary and middle school main entry windows, as recommended by the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. This is an item for possible action, and so with us, we have our Chief Facilities Management Officer, Tammy Zimmerman, and then also Lauren Ford, our Associate Chief of Secondary Education. Welcome.
Thank you, President Smith, trustees, Dr. Enfield. Bringing this item to you guys today, safety and security, with Associate Chief Ford, as well as Chief Trevino, who's in the audience, and our Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, Scott Benton. So we have our WCSD promise, we will know every student by name and strength and needs so they graduate with the future they choose, and we'll deliver on this promise in partnership with our community and families. So this item, we brought to Safe and Healthy Schools Commission October 9th, just so you guys, and I'm just going to reiterate this presentation back to you guys that we sent to them. We have elementary school single points that have been completed either through the revitalization or new construction, or the capital renewal plan. So every elementary school has a single point of entry. Middle schools have a single point as well. Those were done either through the COPS grant or new construction way back when, in the 2000, early 2008, 2009. Proctor Hug has a single point in its new construction as well, and Incline High School will receive one through the Dave and Cheryl Duffield Foundation donation. So working with the chief of police and school police, and associate chiefs, and teaching, learning, and leadership, we've come up with a presentation or a plan to implement and pilot at three schools, single point of entries, high schools specifically. High schools are a different animal than elementary and middle school. They don't come and go in nice little packages at the beginning and the end of school days, so wanted to work with them to see what their options were and to work through those. These projects, we intend to work through lessons learned at those schools with the staff, and as well as the students, because they have a voice in this and they know how they function. So we want to work with those student voices as well. We've identified these three projects, and we anticipate with construction that they would be completed for next school year. That's pending bidding process, construction, and any procurement issues we may see, which we still have. We've worked through some potential plans, we've sent them out to the schools, and I just wanted to kind of show you that we've been a little proactive with this, to actually start the ball running, because we think things, and then the schools come in and they may have a different idea. I said we're going to have student input. They actually met today with Darville Bell's Damani Ranch students, and they're going to have input. They'll then meet with the other schools, with McQueen and with Sparks High School as well. We need this time in order to take the nine months to actually work through those processes with the schools, and issues, and behaviors, because it's not going to be as easy as just putting in a wall and it changes everybody's thoughts, process. So that's, that's part of why we need this nine months in order to do that. We'll have to bid them, construct them, and we will start that as soon as we get those plans completed. Along with this, we're actually proposing to put film up on those windows in the front of the schools, so you can obscure the point of view into the school, into the school. It allows us to brand those schools, too, and using the students to actually talk about what the branding is, and what their school should look like, and making them welcoming for those people to walk into. So that's part of this as well, and we anticipate that being ready for next school year as well, in all the elementary, middles, and at Proctor Hug High School. So the recommendation from Safe and Healthy Schools Commission is to actually implement these into the next school year, and bring this towards, to the board, to actually approve this motion. So the recommendation that we're asking of the board today is to approve the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission's recommendations to move forward with the installation of the single points and secure perimeters at those three schools, and the security film on elementary, middles, and Proctor Hug High School. And with that, we'll take any questions. I can answer construction questions, though school questions would be Lauren, school police would be Chief Trevino, but we're ready for anything you might have.
I think it's in here, but I think I missed it. It's already in the capital projects funds, it doesn't come out of general fund, and it's no, nothing to be bonded, nothing to come out of any other funds.
This would come out of existing capital projects funds in our capital renewal plan under the safety item list.
There a cost on there? Did I miss it? I know I missed it.
We have not put a cost to them, we've got estimates for them, but until, you'll get to see them when they're bid and approved through that, that process.
JJ, do we have any public comment on this?
The board received an email from Freeman Holbrook.
Thank you. Clerk Rodriguez, I know that you had a comment.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to comment a little bit of questions. I know this has been talked about for the last couple of years that I know of, and I know the majority of us on this board are pretty passionate about this. Why just these three schools? Is there a reason why, because we have, what, is it nine schools that do not have single point entries at this time?
So, as with the elementary and the middle, we started with a few schools at a time and did each, you know, until we had all the elementary schools done. With the high schools, let's use McQueen as an example, the community wants that, the students want the single point of entry. The reality also is that every time the bell rings, they are going out to the mobiles on campus, right, and coming back in. So in McQueen's office setup, the way it's set up is not as clean as it was at the elementary schools to build that single point of entry. So with McQueen, we need to look at how we're using that single point of entry, how it works, how, who's stationed there, what construction has to occur. Their office right now is constructed where you walk all the way in, right, turn left. So, and Damani Ranch also, that school type was built where you walk through the school to get to the front office. It's quite a long distance away. So what we would like to do is work with principals, teachers, and students, and community members on what's working, what's not, what can we fix, what can't we fix. They want this, and they want to work on it and make it right. We work out the glitches, and we can easily implement it at the other schools with differing builds. And all three schools have completely different makeups, which is helpful with the high schools we have.
So that being said, are you getting a little bit of pushback from the other high schools?
No. We've talked about it with the high school principals, and they understand. So, like, for example, the Damani Ranch build, we have several of those high schools, right, and it's concerning, like, do we need a person to stand at the door now? Do we need another employee? What do we need? And our thought process is, is let's look at the many different options that we have, and let's see what can work before we say you need a different employee, or I need complete construction to move my office from the middle to the front, right? Let's figure out what we can work on and work through. So, no, they're eager to see what happens with the other schools, and they're eager to hear from the principals.
Okay, thank you. I just, I know this is a priority for a lot of us, and it's part of our strategic plan, and, and it's, you know, I got to share with Trustee Mayberry, it's something that does keep me awake, you know? I got kids in schools just as well, and, and it's just, it's a little frustrating, it takes this much time. I understand there's a lot of heavy lifting to do.
From our perspective, the high school principals and the secondary team down in TLL, we are happy that it's moving forward, that these schools are willing to be open to do this and participate in this, and then after we get that feedback, we're excited to see what, how fast we can go next. So this was great news to us.
Last question. So while we're looking at implementing these in these three, for these three schools, are we able to have those dialogue discussions with the existing high schools, and we start moving forward there as well?
Yes, we meet every month with high school principals, so our goal would be, as we're implementing things with glitches that we find, or what's working well, we're going to incorporate that into our high school meetings on a regular basis.
Outstanding, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, just piggybacking on Trustee J. Rod, we, you know, we have an opportunity to submit questions ahead of time, so you got my questions, and thank you for the response. And I, I'm delighted to see this, I really am, and, but I, too, just, it's, I just have, obviously I support it, right, but the trepidation I have really is largely focused on the timing, you know? You have, Sparks High School is unique, but double, you have Damani Ranch, very similar layout to North Valleys and Spanish Springs, and then you have McQueen, very similar layout to Galena and Reed. You know, why not? And I'm just asking a question, but why not, you know, tackle all of them at the same time? It, go ahead.
So at Damani Ranch, there may be hiccups along the way, and we could address them with just one school quickly. If all three were having different hiccups at different times, this problem's happening at Damani, this is happening at Spanish Springs, this is happening at North Valleys, then we are going to take longer to address the issues. If the issues happen at one school, we can get those addressed and prevent them from happening at the next time we do a build.
Yeah, I understand, and I can appreciate that. I'm, you know, I guess it's a catch-22. I just, it's just, it's just so important to me and many of us that we harden our high schools. I just, you know, I, it's one of those things I hear a lot about from our parents. I don't hear, particularly because I have, you know, children in high school, so I get more feedback from high, on the high school level than I do middle school or elementary school, and that's, particularly with Reed High, Spanish Springs, I hear a lot about just how easy it is to access to schools. And I, it's something that's, you know, I lose sleep over, and I don't, to the extent that we can expedite the timeline, that, you know, I would be grateful if not. I mean, I, you know, I'm sure I could work with somebody on the board, and we could put something on the agenda soon, but I'm anxious to see the outcome. Again, it's not a criticism, it's just a concern, and I think it's a valid concern, because I hear from a lot of mom and dad. And I think it's a valid concern because I hear from a lot of mom and dads, again, just about how easy it is to walk in to these noted high schools with nobody around, pre-access. Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll go with Trustee Westlake and then Trustee Woodley and then maybe bring us to a motion.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you very much for the work you're doing. Again, this is, this is important, it's urgent. So, is there a way maybe that we can speed it up just a little bit? Like, there are schools that have the same structure. So, every project, you decide this structure requires demo. This, the way this school is built, we have to do demo. So, you do the demo on the one school and you see, oh, well, we've got this problem, this problem, this problem, which means the other schools that are built like that, the same structure, are going to have the same thing. But now you've got the demo done, you know what the problems are, then while you're moving to the next, the framing of this school, get the demo going on the other schools and whatever framing problems you run into, you know you're probably going to have those problems, but you've already addressed those and now you're moving to framing on those schools. And then the next one is putting the finish work in and that way it's just kind of flowing. It's like demo, good, we got through this school, these schools, demo, 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 and then it's just, it's constant. It's not like start and finish on one school and now we start and finish on this school. It's start and you get through part of it and then you start on these and so it's fluid.
So, as soon as we start actually implementing them and doing construction, we will start designing the other schools. We'll work towards that in our capital renewal to start setting aside that funding for it in the next school year, you know, the FY '25 and FY '26, if that's what it takes. But we bid them as a whole project. So, they have to be completed as a whole project by a contractor. And as much as we think every school is the same, it's not because they're constructed by different contractors, they have different means and methods, and so we don't know what we don't know until we start opening those up. And like I said, every school could be different. We will take those lessons learned as we start constructing them and demoing and looking at the other schools to make those plans better and better so that we can be more fluid with those next schools. That's the process that we're looking at and trying to implement.
All right, thank you. So, I understand how my fellow trustees feel, definitely understand that. I have a privilege of working and dealing with construction in my day job and every developer says, "When I build houses, 100 houses, 200 houses, the first 10 are always the most expensive." And that's just a given, it's always like that. Same thing with bridges, even though you have the funding to rebuild all your bridges, always do it one at a time because it's just the unforeseen situations that happen. So, you have to be prudent and smart in doing this. You can't do them all at once. You have to do, you pick the three that are different but comparable to others, you work on those, you get through the hiccups. I've seen $1 million projects turn into $5 million projects and you want to make sure that you get through that before you move on to the next. So, I appreciate that and I'm ready to make.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendations from the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission related to single point of entry and secure perimeter high school pilot projects at Robert McQueen High School, Damani Ranch High School, and Sparks High School and security film at elementary and middle schools.
Second. All right, motion by Trustee Woodley, seconded by Vice President Nicolette. Trustee Mayberry?
Yeah, just follow up on what Trustee Woodley said. Again, I'm not, I get the construction aspect, that's not my concern. My concern is the timing, okay? It's, this is dragging on and I won't see some progress, I'm getting a little passionate about it, but that's the frustration I have. Thank you.
Bring the passion, this, of all the things to be passionate about, this is worth being passionate about. These are the lives of our children. All right, seeing no other lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. And although he did not come up, I do want to recognize Scott Benton, he was here and he's also the Chair of the Commission. So, thank you so much. Please extend our thanks back to everyone. All right, everyone, that closes item 4.06 and brings us to our last item for action tonight, 4.07. This is the approval and adoption of changes to the Office of Talent and Professional Growth Systems in the estimated total amount of $330,293 associated with the changes designed to improve services to schools. This is an item for possible action and we welcome our Chief Talent Officer, Dr. Christina Mason. Hi, Dr. Mason.
Hi, greetings through the Board President, President Smith, and all WCSD trustees, Dr. Enfield, our Superintendent. I am Dr. Christina Mason, the very proud Chief Talent Officer of our Washoe County School District. I'm here this evening to present our proposed Talent and Professional Growth Systems reorganization. Before I get started, this promise grounds us as a department. We have gone through a process of visioning our core values and what this means to us in delivery of our services. And so, to that end, I wanted to invite just some representatives of our department that are still here. They have been very involved, like the entire department has been very involved in this reorg. There has not been a job description, lane of work that we have not touched, looked at, evaluated to see what service delivery model we need and what organizational structure we need. So, Team TPGS, I'm very grateful for you and that's three of the 70 that are, that are in our care. So, our promise, as you know, grounds us in what we do for our students, but our services ensure that our schools have the talented, compassionate adults that, in all of the very distinct roles that we offer as an employer. Our delivery of service as a department pending your vote tonight is now aligned to our strategic plan and the strategic port, excuse me, strategic support of the work happening in our schools, specifically elevating instructional leadership and ensuring that we have a talented and robust workforce. To that end, we will focus our discussion around the TPGS reorganization centered on Pillar C, which is the commitment to elevating educators, and Pillar D, which is the culture of excellence and accountability. Now, on this slide, I think it's really important to understand where we began this journey. Now, this reorg was necessitated as a result of TPGS, the Department in my care, working collaboratively with our visionary Superintendent, Dr. Enfield, and our stakeholders to include other chiefs, our school leaders, and DOKIS groups that included ESP staff and certificated employees. Now, we had to imagine a new way of doing business and in some, we asked how we could critically examine our scope of services and get better and more aligned with our other WCSD departments. Now, over the last eight months, it's no secret that I have worked very closely with Dr. Torrey Parks, who is our Chief Academic Officer, to not only fine-tune the service delivery of his department, Teaching, Learning and Leadership, but then to redefine the delivery of service of our department, formerly HR, we've buried that term, we are Talent and Professional Growth Systems. Now, as you look at this timeline, you will see that I'm not highlighting all of the work that we've done. Remember, I came to you and brought our results of our very in-depth assessment in March. I came back in August and then I came back to talk to you about the work that we have been doing. But I'm highlighting here on this slide areas that have required us to collaborate with other department chiefs. And this is part of Dr. Enfield's vision for how we create a system of coherence that is centered on the results and access for our students, right, through our, through the adults and this delivery of services that we provide. So, we continue to model what responsiveness and feedback looks like, but we, as you are also aware, last spring, you approved two Associate Chiefs, right? And those Associate Chiefs are now going to be aligned with our talent partners who are our former human resources technicians. We'll talk about that in a slide coming up. But that was critical and important because it's going to allow us to kind of set the stage for how we plan, how we will talk about what this collaborative process look like moving forward. So, for this slide, this is a snippet of the larger report that you received called the summary of the reorg costs. Now, again, I collaborated with both Mark Mathers and Neil Rombardo, who is our Chief General Counsel. As you may recall, one of the recommendations that came back from our HR assessment was the expansion of investigators. Neil and I have formed last year what we call the Legal Roundtable. It is talent, labor, and labor attorneys meeting together. So, Neil and Kevin meet with myself and Anthony Spotts as the Labor Relations Manager, and we talk about all of the things that are in our purview when it comes to law, the way that we monitor our contracts and things of that nature. I'm bringing that up because the investigators that you approved for him actually were in my reorg assessment, right? We knew we needed to expand the investigator capacity in our district. We knew through conversations and our discussions at the Legal Roundtable that they were better suited to be positioned with Chief Rombardo, and so they were. The same that you will see in the overall budgetary impact that we have there, those position, there's one position that is brand new in our reorg and I'll talk about the cost savings that we performed over the last six months with, with kind of these new shifts and role titles and things that we had to do to ensure we had the right service model. But two of those positions and that overall budgetary impact are not even in my org. They go to, they would go to Mr. Mathers so that we could expand the payroll capacity so that our talent partners can spend time as a thought partner guiding and helping principals with their talent needs, their talent vision, and their talent retention processes in the school. I think it was important for us to try to codify, very short bullets, what this experience will mean to school leaders. Today, we went to the Principal Business Meeting, which TPGS is happy to host in partnership with TLNL, and we talked about getting feedback on the talent partner role. Here's the feedback you, we received from you in the spring, principals. Here's how we've actualized on it right now. Here's what we're projecting moving forward and this is what the talent partner could mean and do for you. Give us your feedbacks. We want your concerns, we want your wonders, we want the ideas that you have. We are creating systems for continuous loops and cycles of feedback. We actually use that feedback real time. The, I'd like to give a shout out to the TLT or the Talent Leadership Team, very talented and bright individuals across the department that help guide and lead the work that we do. Additionally, there will be improvements and impacts as a result of our reorganization to our staff, right? Not just school leaders, but to all of our staff. And these are some of the ways that we have been able to codify what that improvement and enhancement of service will look like. And again, we are here to serve students. Our through line just happens to be through the grownups. So, what does this enhanced service and reorganization look like for our families and our students? And that is all I have for you today. I am very happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you, Dr. Mason, and I want to thank everyone in Talent and Professional Growth Systems. This has been an epic undertaking. I know it may seem from this presentation that we are merely shifting positions and changing titles and that's not it at all. This is a paradigm shift and a culture shift and a fundamental shift in how central office views itself in service to schools. So, what can we do to help our building principals really focus on the day-to-day instructional leadership that we want them to do? And that's why I think this is so incredibly important because right now, I will tell you, when I compare some of the things that we expect of our building principals, many other systems do not put those burdens on their principals. I think there is work that we need to take back as a system and this allows us to take some of that work back and alleviate the burden on our building leaders. So, I think this is incredibly important and I applaud you for your visioning and your hard work.
Thank you.
Trustee Church, I'll go to you in just a moment. So, I also really support this. I was very, very happy to see that principals will now have a point of contact through their Associate Chief, someone that's just a phone call away. What they actually have to manage in their own hiring process is very, very burdensome. So, I'm very glad to see that this team will be approaching it differently and this is exactly the kind of service model that we're moving towards so that our principals and our staff at the schools can be focused on kids and teachers and families. So, thank you. Trustee Church.
Thank you. With a law enforcement, military background, it's area I don't have expertise in and we've hired a Superintendent, has an incredible background, who has hired incredible people to bring on to her staff. So, I will absolutely not be micromanaging. If the Superintendent wants this, then that's what I'm going to vote for. That said, I had a discussion with a citizen yesterday, and I get this a lot, we've gone from 65,000 students to 60. As a board, we have voted over and over to increase non-teaching-related staff. And I'm really concerned about that. And while I'm totally behind this, I just have to express concern that we look at other areas we can cut or realign rather than hire new, realign, save money, et cetera, because it's a very difficult thing to talk to my constituents about why we're doing this and at the expense of not having more teachers, et cetera, and pay raises for all the staff, et cetera, et cetera. So, I guess I've made my point and then the only question I have, one thing I really like is the investigators. What will they, can you be more clear, what will they investigate? For example, complaints of sexual harassment, criminal things, embezzlement?
So, they are a part of Chief Rombardo's Administrative Investigations Team. I think actually Sarah is a little bit more equipped to talk more readily about the work that, since they've onboarded now the two, the work that they'll be doing. And there is a flow for when things get handed off to that investigatory team, so.
But before you start, Sarah, this is also a very good point to recognize the fact that I am delinquent in welcoming Sarah to today's meeting. As Dr. Mason was saying that, I was like, yes, indeed, we are not, I'm not being sat next to Neil Rombardo today. We have our Deputy Chief, General Counsel, Sarah Montalvo, who's actually joining us. And Sarah, feel free to jump in.
Thank you, Beth. Welcome. Yes, so, on the administrative investigators, actually, we only have one position filled because we did have our other administrative investigator retire, so we still have an opening there. But the primary role of our administrative investigator right now is to review crips that are sent from schools for staff on student bullying and because we wanted to remove any, any potential bias that could happen at the school level. So, we have our administrative investigators, that is, that takes probably about 80% of their time. We do, then, we will take any kind of investigations that rise to the level of potential harassment. Title IX also comes into our purview and then if it's a rather complex investigation involving multiple different schools, we would take that as well, even if that might potentially involve student-on-student bullying, but involves multiple schools, that would rise the level of the administrative investigator.
I might comment on that. It's clearly in the news and the Governor, AKA the, former Governor Sandoval addressed that as a Regent for UNR, that they took some heat for Title IX. So, I think that's, we need to hire that investigator ASAP and get him or her to work. What about, anyway, the criminal would still be handled by school police or outside agencies?
For criminal investigations, that is with our school police department or if it involves a jurisdiction of our local city or county police departments, then that goes to them. But oftentimes, the criminal goes first and then we still have to perform our administrative side of it. We'll wait for the criminal to conclude and then we will resume our administrative investigation.
And one more question, a final one if I might. So, this is an issue that's gone back and forth and it's a big concern. But it doesn't matter what it's about, but you call the complainant in and you interview them. And the question they may ask, "Are you here to help me get to the end result or are you here to defend the district?" Do you see the conflict and how do we handle that?
So, I would say I think we're going a bit beyond the scope of what the presentation is. So, if you have any sort of, you know, additional questions on that, I'm sure that's something that we can address with you, you know, offline on individual questions. But I just want to make sure we're staying within the scope of Dr. Mason's presentation.
I would like to respond, if I may, to Trustee Church. So, Trustee Church, one of the things I'd like to talk about is kind of the process that we went through to get to where we are now. It was important to me that we were good stewards of the public It was important to me that we were good stewards of the public trust and the public dollar. And so what we did with Dr. Enfield's blessing was we halted any movement or transfers, or, not transfers, but any movement of hiring new people into positions that were vacated in our department due to attrition. And so we did that because we knew we were going to have to build a new org, and we didn't want to bring people in to do a job. Like, say we get, somebody got hired in August, and then we bring them in and say, oh, and by the way, because of our new reorg, now we're changing what you get to do. So we thought it prudent to not only see if there were cost savings that we could absorb, so that, my goal was honestly to get this cost neutral. It really, truly was. And so what you see here is a multi-month process, multi-conversations with my chief colleagues, to think about different ways that we can, you know, do the reorganization, where there are places where we could shift service. For example, Mr. Dr. La marca has taken volunteer services under his wing with Family and School Supports because it fits better there, and the impact will be much greater. Equity and diversity has come to us, right? Because we are the professional learning, professional capacity arm of our, of our district. So we really did try to be mindful of the public trust and the public dollar, for sure.
Oh, thank you. A lot of work has gone into this for a long time, and I really appreciate that. I do have a few questions. First, a comment in my school visits. There is a concern, as was previously shared amongst principals, that they feel they, they can't be the, the school leader that they need to be because of all the HR duties. And so I'm really glad to see that we can move into those wraparound services so the, the administrators in schools can pay more attention to being the school leaders. Slide number five. It's little, but I try to understand, and of course, I think most people know I like the numbers. Slide number five, the total budgetary impact, $330,293.
Yes.
That's six positions, or does that include the two?
It's actually just three.
It's just three?
It is the new proposed position of Director of School Supports, which now will supervise and align services with our Associate Chiefs and their, and the talent partners that are supporting schools and departments.
Okay.
And it is two full-time payroll technicians for Chief Mathers, because what happens is when we shift the work of the HR tech, some of the work they were doing was very technical and work that traditionally has been done in the business office. Accounting of, you know, early separations and things of that nature. That work is moving to Chief Mathers, and so he needs additional payroll staff. So if you look at this document that accompanied this slide presentation, then it will break out for you what those costs were, and those costs were for the Director of School Supports, and then the two payroll FTE that will go to Business and Finance. That is what the 330 represents.
So the, the other three are, are just reclassifications, conversions, no money attached to them?
So over, you're talking about the three bullets on the right-hand side, the deleted positions?
Well, we've got the current roles, which are six of them, and I'm assuming that then you're changing their titles?
There were some changes of titles there. For example, the Manager of Talent Acquisition, formerly Katie Delone, she departed in April of-
You mean she, she-
That's right. I'm sorry. She moved on to a new adventure. She did not depart. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. Thank you. She is still with us, Katie. I'm sorry if you're watching this. She, she went on to a new adventure, but because of the shift, we added different duties to that role, so it's now being added as a director. But everything in the current role and proposed role, those are all cost neutral. We were able to do those without asking for additional money because of the, the holdbacks of the vacancies that we did in the department.
Okay, so I see there's not really a relationship to the total budgetary impact number. What I'm really getting at, and thank you for that, because I do like to understand this-
Yes.
Is I noticed in the org chart, and, and thank you for that, because that was a delicious deep dive, even though it was, I had to get out my magnifying, just so you know. There's nine vacancies. So can, how do I want to phrase this? Are we, are you going to be coming back to the board to fill nine more vacancies?
No, ma'am.
Or is that just a reflection of process and change?
Reflection of process and change, and natural attrition. Yes.
All right, fantastic. Something I just want to mention for anyone following along is that that total budgetary impact is, it's not just salaries, that salary, it's PERS, it's benefits, it's everything. So when we show a dollar amount, it's not the salary impact, it's the true full cost, which we know is beyond, you know, what someone earns in terms of an hourly or salary rate. JJ, do we have any public comment?
Not for this item.
Fantastic. I'll bring it back to this body looking for a motion.
I'll take that on, Madam President. I move that the Board Trustees approves and adopts the Talent and Professional Growth System new org chart and costs associated with the changes.
All right. We have a motion by Trustee Woodley. We have a second by Clerk Rodriguez. I see no lights on. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you so much, Dr. Mason and team, everyone. This is so much great work. Thank you so, so much. All right, everyone, that closes Section 4, this time for good. We won't be coming back to it. And now we'll move on to Section 5, our reports. Our Student Representative, Arabelle, was not able to join us, so we will go ahead and move past Item 5.01 and move on to Item 5.02. These are our board reports. And I will, I was going to start with Vice President Nicolette, if she wants to kick us off this time.
I would be happy to.
All right, and then we're going to go this way.
I, I have to preface it with, by saying that-
Can you say all three minutes?
That I have been a very active participant, having a wonderful time, doing a lot of asking, listening, and learning, and I'm just giving you a short snippet. If I could have the first photo, this is at Swope Middle School during the Veterans Day celebration, and the photo is a bunch of friends, but most importantly is the gentleman in the police officer's uniform. That would be Washoe County School District Police Officer Jeff Oreka, and he received the Swope Veterans Day Celebration Award. He was very, he was very thrilled. It was fun. Okay, photos too, please? Thank you. This vehicle was in the Reno Veterans Day Parade. I marched with Reno High School, JROTC. And this is an Air Force fire truck. This is what they have. We, we have this here in our midst so that you can't really see, but on the very front is where the unit is, and you can see that cab. They have, you know, almost a, almost a 360, not quite, but that is a fire truck, Air Force, it's called the Air Force Panther. Yeah, right on. Number three, please. This was my ride-along that I did with Sergeant Baker, and we were at Reed High, no, yes, no, we were at Worcester High School, sorry, David Kitchen. And it was just a wonderful, it was a wonderful, almost all-day-long. We not only had an emergency at a school that I got to witness, fire and Washoe County School District Police worked together to make good things happen, keep people safe, and ended up at Anderson Elementary School to hear a brass ensemble from the Reno Symphony playing music to all the students at Anderson Elementary. It was breathtaking. Number four and five, please. Okay, so this beauty is a black cherry terramisou. This is just the top. If you could please show the side. You're fabulous, JJ. I attended the AACCT, American Culinary Federation Certification Luncheon. These students were absolutely fabulous. I mean, you can look for great restaurants out there coming soon. I mean, there already are some, but these are going to be greater. And so next, I visited in Compass and High Desert Montessori, are two of our charter schools. McQueen Girl Soccer Game, the State of Education Good Job Superintendent, Incline Village High School Governor's STEM Open House, and I'll stop.
Thank you, Vice President Nicolette.
Thank you. Nicolette, you should be a culinary photographer. Those are, those are good photos.
It was good, huh, was it? It was delicious.
Thank you. I, I had an opportunity, so I'll be brief. I'll just talk a little bit about my school visits real quick. I just have one photo to share with you all. Thank you very much, JJ, for doing that. This is my visit at Nick Palakitas Elementary School with Principal Chantel Lee, and I was escorted by two of the fifth-grade leadership students, Marcy Dibble and Makina Miller. And these are the kind of, of school visits I like the best, when I can engage with the students, when I can hear from them, when they can show me around. So that was really a memorable experience for me. Thank you very much. Also had a chance to visit with Principal David Kitchen at Worcester as well, and Jesse Hall Principal Victor Sherbandi. Appreciate the chance to participate in the Sparks Middle School Veterans Day Ceremony with my colleagues, Trustee Rodriguez and Trustee Westlake. Good to see you in last, last week. It was a beautiful event at Sparks Middle School. Thought the principal, the superintendent was inspiring at the State of Education address. Excellent performance and, and presentation, and I really appreciate all the, the students and staff that were there, that were showcasing the services that, that we provide our community. I did also participate in the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission via TEAMS. I was at the College Fair at the Convention Center a few weeks ago. It was good to see some of you at the Evening of Pure Imagination, celebrating the work of Education Alliance. Also met individually with some of our administrators, particularly those that are administering the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program. I was enlightened to hear the work that goes on in, in that particular section of our, of our school. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, I too had a great time at the State of Education. Job well done, Dr. Enfield. And I did attend the Evening of Pure Imagination along with Trustee Mayberry and our president. She gave a good speech. We appreciate all the work that they do at Education Alliance. I also attended, actually got to speak at a get-together for representation of veterans, acknowledgement of veterans at Billingshurst Middle School. And in this photo right here, we have all the kids that brought someone who's a family member that was a veteran. So this was really beautiful to see. There were a lot of veterans there, and it's a very pro-veteran school. I'm sure all of our schools are, but it was really nice to see that. So I was very privileged to speak, and I got to meet this young gentleman here who passed, who crossed a specific ocean 10 times in his service to his country. And that's a long crossing. He's over 90 years old. He's served in a couple of different fields, war, Korean War, and some other missions as well. So that was, that was very, it was the first time I've ever had a folded flag presented to me after nine years of service in Marine Corps. That was awesome. That was, I was very, I was teared up, so I appreciate that. That was principal matic. And then on Veterans Day, I participated as a, as your NIAA representative on the board for Nevada Interscholastic Athletics Association. I provided the championship trophies to, first, we had Meadows High School from down south, and they won the 3A girls volleyball. And then this was Smith Valley, 1A, and they won, and they played against Colville, who's out of, out of California. And initially, I wasn't excited about being here on Veterans Day because I wanted to be at the parade. I wanted to share that day with a lot of veterans, but this next photo here made it even more special because this is Dylan Gray. Dylan Gray's a Marine from Smith Valley. I didn't know he had a daughter in high school, and she's a freshman, so she got to win as a freshman. Dylan Gray, I've met him over 10 years ago. This was after he, he served in Afghanistan and Iraq, and you can't tell by this photo here, but he lost both of his lower legs in a, in an incident in Iraq. And so I felt very privileged that I got to spend Veterans Day with him, and for him to watch his daughter win a championship, state championship. So that made it worthwhile. I was very happy with that. So Dylan's a great guy, and he's dealt with a lot of what we deal with post-injury from war, but I'm very happy for him and very happy for his daughter. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a busy few weeks. Attended a JROTC Dining In. It was wonderful. And also attended some homeless meetings and events. People say, well, what does that have to do with a trustee? We do have many children in transition, AKA homeless, and of course, we have various programs to reach out to not only the kids, but the families in need through the school district. And truth be known, in my younger days, I was the board president of a 501(c)(3) homeless center. So those homeless that a lot of people like to ignore are strong in my heart, a major concern of mine, and just something I care deeply about. Also attended the, and I, is it Piccolo or Piccolo? Piccolo. I should know that. Fundraiser, and my wife and I attended their Italian dinner. It was wonderful. And of course, I attended the Great City Schools Conference in Las Vegas, and then after the end of the conference, stayed in San Diego for a while and did some different vocational things, and also attended Veterans Day events down there. Got to meet a number of incredible veterans, Korean War, Purple Heartholder, Marine Corps veteran, just incredible inspirational individual, and a number of other veterans that, so it's always wonderful to meet such individuals, and that's my report.
Thank you. This is going to be fast and furious. So seven school visits, all a privilege. My first slide, this is Principal Ryan Dutch from Lloyd Diedrickson Elementary School. He recently received a $10,000 grant from the Assistance League, and this is two of the girls on his student voice. I also went to Agnes Rizley Elementary School, the new principal there, Melissa Sullivan. I was able to watch her award perfect attendance certificates to 138 students. I want to give a shout out to the nutrition worker and the custodian there that also help teachers when they're doing student conference, student-parent conferences, help translate. So awesome work at that school. I attended the JROTC Celebration at Hug High School, Commander Clark advancing JROTC members to the next higher rank. And then on the second slide, I was, had the absolute privilege to do a home visit with Penny Lambert and Stacy Stosich, both second-grade teachers at Ecoloder. They're called Mustang Visits. And the next slide, yes, that's Cameron, amazing young man. I'm in it for this, for home visits. They're wonderful. Attended the State of Education address with fellow board members and Superintendent Enfield. I have a special place in my heart for the Health and Science Academy, should be the next slide. They help with blood drives and raising breast cancer awareness. Also, the Starbase Program, the Family Graduation Advocates, the Hope Squad, which students, suicide intervention. Sixth and seventh slide, Sparks Middle School. The first was to celebrate the wonderful principal, the new principal of Sparks Middle School, Sarah Peterson, hosted by her students, the student voice, remarkable young people, and they have excellent taste and discernment when it comes to principals. The second celebration was also at Sparks Middle School, celebrating our veterans. They honor two veteran teachers there, Mr. Clark and Mr. Orsborn. Our very own JJ, her brother is Mr. Clark. So I just want to say. Trustee Rodriguez was also honored for his service. I attended the Sparks High School versus Carson for their soccer championship. Unfortunately, the Raiders lost. And last, but not least, this is the automotive shop with, the shop program leader there, teacher Mr. Hernandez. He has great plans. He's reaching out to businesses in our community to partner with their automotive.
Woohoo!
You did it.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I kind of echo a lot of, I got to attend the Sparks Middle School, the Veterans Day appreciation with Trustee Mayberry and Westlake. Visited several schools. I-
Um, I, uh, as trustee May, uh, Westlake, you got way more, far more here. Uh, at Spanish Springs High School, and their, their auto shop is amazing. Uh, so I really wanna emphasize, like, uh, it was down for a while, um, they were between, uh, teachers, and as soon as they were able to reopen it, they had, uh, it was 180 students sign up for it.
And girls.
Yes, yep. So, no, that was that Spanish Springs High School. Sorry. I'm, I'm going quick, I know. Um, I did attend the Save Education, uh, with a vast majority of you. Um, and, uh, so President Smith and Superintendent Field, a great speech, really, really uplifting. And, uh, do wanna welcome home our OTC students from Spanish Springs High School, Galena and McQueen. They just came back from the National Raider Championship. Uh, I do wanna give a little kudos to Spanish Springs. Their, uh, female team actually made third overall in the nation, so that's really impressive for, for our young ladies there. And I just wanna end it with a Happy Veterans Day to my colleagues, Jeff and Alex, and, uh, Happy Marine Corps Birthday to my younger brother, you know, by like five or six months. So that's it. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Um, so I attended the Council of Great City Schools. It's my first photo that we have up here. It was a National Public Education Conference, and trustee Church mentioned that. A high point for me was seeing Ivy Batmal. She's there in San Diego, so we were able to meet with her and hear how her studies are going. And then over on the right-hand side, you'll see that our very own Arabelle Deason represented the Washoe County School District on a student voice panel with students from across America. And she did an absolutely fantastic job, so very, very proud of her. I attended the Alliance Breakfast Event, which was hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. I had a wonderful time speaking and helping to host at the Education Alliance Evening of Pure Imagination. Uh, was very honored to open the annual State of Education held at Hug High School, and so proud to hear Dr. Enfield share the vision and future of our district. And a special thank you to my colleagues who did attend that, um, which was Vice President Nicolette, Clerk Rodriguez, trustees Mayberry, Westlake, and Woodley. I also visited Collin Ranch Elementary School, Vaughn Middle School, and Bernice Matthews Elementary School. I was also moved by the deeply impressive, uh, Veterans Day Assembly at Swope Middle School, where we were able to see Officer Herka become a Veteran Hall of Fame member. And then I was also interviewed by three students from Sky Ranch Middle School who wanted to talk about educational equity. And before each Thanksgiving meeting, I do my Thanksgiving letter, and that is how I will close it. There is so much to be thankful for in this past year and as we look ahead to 2024. I am thankful for my colleagues and especially the newest members of our board family, trustee Woodley and trustee Westlake. I admire how trustee Woodley blends respect with directness in his words, and how trustee Westlake is a model for truly opening your mind and heart to new information so that we can all be better together. I'm thankful for the historic funding improvements Nevada Public Education received from the legislature this year, and for all the people and partners who made that happen. Special gratitude goes out to Senate Majority Leader Nicole Canizaro, who championed Senate Bill 231, which allows us to go even further with our compensation to many staff members. I'm thankful to CFO Mark Mathers, Budget Director Jeff Bosso, and the whole finance team for helping us navigate the unique budget process, which finally allowed us to invest in areas of our district that deserve support. And I'm thankful to Dr. Paul Lamarka for his team's extremely hard work to fulfill our board's beliefs and values around student behavior and setting clear expectations for respect and safety. I'm thankful for our teams who work tirelessly to ensure kids receive mental health support and know that the world is better with them in it, including school counselors, school psychologists, and social workers. Thank you to JJ Batchelder, uh, JJ Batchelder, Jen Caldwell, and Thomas Ley, who each play a special role in keeping our board performing effectively. And my deepest gratitude goes out to our 61,000 children and more than 7,000 WCSD team members. Thank you. May you all be well and happy Thanksgiving. All right. That closes item 5.02 and brings us to item 5.03, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Smith. I'll start backwards. Two weeks ago, I, uh, attended the College Board Forum in New York City and had the honor of serving on a plenary panel where I was able to give a wonderful shout out to President Hilgerson and President Sandoval for the work that they are doing with us in partnership to provide dual credit opportunities for our students, which was very, very well received. And I was happy to be able to do that. I want to thank everybody in the community and staff who came out for our Second Annual State of Education Address. I want to really thank the staff and especially the students who were there to showcase their talents and all the incredible rich array of programming that we have across this district. I was then able last week to present at the Chambers Leadership Program, the Sparks Rotary, and the Edon Major Investment Luncheon to share, uh, the work that we are doing, uh, with respect to our strategic plan. I have been desperately on social media trying to keep up with all of the successes of our scholar athletes, and lest that any of them think their superintendent does not love them, just deal with it. I'm reading the comprehensive list right here. Boys cross, boys cross-country, North 5A, Spanish Springs High School, first place. Team state championship, first place. Individual, highest regional individual champion school, Peyton Miller from Spanish Springs, second place. Highest state individual champion school, Eric, Eric Ortega Gamil, Gamil? I'm sorry, Eric, if I got your name on. Reno High School, first place. North 3A classification, North Valleys, third place at the team regional, at the team state championships, North Valleys took fifth place. For individual, Austin Key from North Valleys took first place in the team regional, and in the team state, Austin Key again took North Valleys first place. North 2A, Incline High School took second place, both team regional and state. And the individual there is Noah McMahon from Incline High School, who took first place in both. Moving to girls cross-country, North 5A, Galena High School took third place, uh, in the team regional, and Reno High School took fifth place in the team state championships. The individual level, the highest regional individual school was Eleanor Raker, Galena, Eleanor Raker from Galena, who took first place. You've probably read about her, probably read about many of these in the RGJ. She also took second place at state. North 3A, Hug High School took sixth place. Individual, Taylor Dickey, North Valleys High School, fourth place. North 2A, again, girls cross-country, Incline High School, second place in both. Individual, Kira Noble from Incline, third place. Football, North 5A 3, team regional champs, Galena High School, first place. Yay! And they, um, they're, the state championship is, we think, coming up on the 18th? Is it? This Saturday? This Saturday. All right. In volleyball, North 5A, Spanish Springs High School, team regional, first place. Moving on to girls golf, North 4A, Reed High School, second place. Team regional, team state championship, Reed High School, again, third place. And North 3A, team state championships, Worcester High School, fifth place. For boy soccer, North 5A, Sparks High School, first place in the team regional championship. Girls soccer, North 4A, McQueen High School, first place team regional, and first place team state championships. Boys tennis, North 4A, Galena High School, first place team regional, and team state championship, Galena High School, first place. Individual, Kyleinda Galena, second place. For doubles, Masato Kado and Akito Kado, both Galena, first place at both team regional and state. Girls tennis, North 4A, Reno High School, first place, team regional and state, and state championship. Individual was Sidney Rogers, who took, uh, from Reno, who took first place in team regional. And finally, in doubles for girls tennis, Alexandra Fulton and Sawyer King from Reno, first place in the team regional championship. Sorry, I know that was a lot, but we have a lot to be proud of. Our scholar athletes are amazing, and I didn't want to accidentally not retweet one of them. And I will end with, um, just letting, uh, just expressing my gratitude again to all of our veterans in the area, my gratitude to our schools who put on such amazing Veterans Day assemblies. Um, and I want to personally again thank trustee Rodriguez, trustee Church, trustee Woodley, and on a personal shout out to my grandfather-in-law, who was killed in a World War II submarine, and so we remember him on that day as well. And the last thing I will forecast for all of you is that, uh, NDE will be releasing, uh, graduation rates, uh, for last year officially, I believe tomorrow, and we will make sure you have those, uh, a little bit in advance. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. That closes out Section 5 and brings us to Section 6, our closing items. So we'll go ahead and we will move on to Item 6.01. This is our public comment. JJ, who do we have?
Roger Edwards.
Hi, Mr. Edwards. Welcome.
Again, Roger Edwards for the record. I just feel like I should be bringing balloons and cake to these meetings. If all we're gonna do is celebrate all these wonderful things that are going on, and we lost a thousand students this year. How's that possible? I mean, we have 60,000 students, and there's gonna be pockets of tremendous accomplishment, but we're still losing students. We still have the worst graduation rates in the country, in the country. I'm so frustrated, I'm gonna quit coming to these things. I must have the wrong agenda. Nowhere on this agenda is there quality of education. Nowhere, again. How many times do I have to get up here? Are you guys tired? I'm tired of doing it. You gotta be tired of seeing me up here. We're not, you gotta focus. Focus, focus, focus. I left the last meeting frustrated. We had teachers up here crying because you gave them a long overdue raise that they needed 25, 24%, whatever it was. Wonderful. You gave the cops a raise, and I don't know how long it's been since they had one, but there's a fight in every, every high school once a week. Why isn't there 12 cops in every school? Why is there more than one cop in this building? This is not where the problems are. You know, you talk about why, and North Valleys is like that. The office is nowhere near the door, okay? So you, this one single entry thing is gonna be tough there. So why aren't there two, two uniforms in the hallways? Why aren't there, why aren't there teachers in the hallways all the time, between every class? You know, when I was in high school, the gym teacher, uh, wandered the hallways, and you didn't wanna get caught by him in between class. Come on, folks. You need to change your promise. The last thing in your promise is preparing the students for the rest of their life, and you're not doing it. Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Valerie Fianaca.
Hi, Ms. Fianaca. Welcome.
Thank you. Valerie Fianaca, for the record. Uh, Ms. Nicolette, I'd like you to, to thank you for playing Lee Greenwood, the unofficial Trump intro song at every Trump rally I've ever been to. Happy Veterans Day to our three veterans here. I'm partial to the Marines, 'cause I come from a long line of Marines. I'm here to thank you trustees for your service, and I mean that, the key word being service. Your servants elected to serve the voters who elected you. Everyone seems to need reminding occasionally. I'm here for one reason only, and that is to speak about the obscene 15% raise voted on by six of you for our superintendent. This during a time of very tough times, probably for at least 50% of our student body and the families you serve. We've had additional chiefs to help distribute her overwhelming workload. The raise is probably what you pay a first-year teacher salary. I'm not surprised that the room is not full of teachers. They do talk online, however. They are discouraged and for many reasons. Perhaps this raise could be entirely donated, and you may have thought of this already, to the native language program that we heard about today that's struggling for funds. That would go a long ways in their program, I'm sure. I did not want this superintendent hired for many reasons, and I was very upfront about it at your in-person interview. It's nothing personal. But I do not deny that she's brilliant. Anybody that can get a $48,000 a year raise in their first year while the students are failing and our stats are going down, that's brilliant. That's absolutely brilliant. I do wanna address something else, though. My special needs fourth-grade grandson has never been mainstreamed because of staff insufficiencies. You don't have enough staff. He's in fourth grade. He's never been in a main, in a, in a normative classroom, one hour in his entire history in this school district. That's a crime, because he's gifted in a lot of ways, but he doesn't know how to read and write, because there's not enough staff to take him into a normal classroom so that he can be surrounded by normal kids for not even one hour. He only, he's in a class now with only three kids. He's the highest functioning, and yet he doesn't get out of his classroom even to eat lunch or to have recess. His teacher this year was certified in dance. She lasted about two weeks in that classroom. Now he has a teacher who's 70 years old that was brought out of retirement to babysit. This school district is not serving my grandchild. He's the only grandchild that will be in this school district, because the rest of them will be in private school. There's no private school for an autistic child that has his disabilities, and that's unfortunate.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fianaca.
Kathleen Evenson.
Hi, Ms. Evenson. Welcome.
I'm a Sparks resident, um, and I'm here today to ask for your help and/or assistance. What's being passed around is a letter that I wrote to Ms. Baker, who is, uh, vice principal at Reed High School. Uh, and it says, "While we have played phone tag for over a month, I've decided to inform you of my concerns in writing. As I plan to attend the Washoe County School District meeting on November 14th, I want you to know what concerns I will be sharing with them. I am retired, and I have been living in Sparks since 2010. Since that time, I've watched the students become more and more disrespectful, causing fights inside and outside of the Smith grocery store. Smith has to pay one of their employees to monitor how many students come in, um, and they're still dealing with a great amount of shrinkage, which is theft. As a senior citizen, I speak for the Toscana Community Association that has 480 homes, and we do not feel safe shopping at Smith during school hours. Recently, retailers across the country have closed 500 retail stores because of theft, and we don't want our Smiths to close. So I suggest the campus be closed so the community can safe shop, safe shopping during school hours. I would be open to suggestions from the student body and/or the staff on what they feel about this. But, um, just recently, I have to give a shout out to the Sparks Police, because about two weeks ago, they did a sting at the Safeway on DISC, and they arrested 26 people, six adults, and 20 children. And I say children, because many of them were from Endine. What's happening? I mean, I know our civilization is going to hell in a handbag, but maybe children's safety, if you closed campuses, you wouldn't have to worry so much about it. When I was in school, we had closed campus, and once the bell rang, the doors shut. Now you could get out, but you couldn't get back in. Food for thought. Do I need a, a petition from you folks, or for you folks? Because, boy, us retired people will be right on that. Is that what you want from us, to get this moving, or do I need to go to my city council? What avenue do I need to take?
Thank you very much, Ms. Evenson.
Victoria Meyer.
Hi, Ms. Meyer.
Victoria Meyer, for the record. There's just so many issues. I was gonna talk about obscenity in the public schools, the books that our kids are subject to. I know there's an IRS statute that exempts you all from obscenity rules, but, uh, the U.S. Constitution and the, um, USC 2252A, child pornography and the penalties associated, the, uh, courts have ruled, Supreme Courts have ruled that, uh, laws do not override, uh, well, first of all, obscenity is not a First Amendment right, and, uh, IRS statutes are unconstitutional that allow public schools and universities, museums and libraries to have this pornography. I know you people have had some of this read to you here, and I almost was gonna do that myself today, but, um, I think you're aware, all of you, of the books in the schools. Fifteen copies of Blue Fifteen copies of Bluest Eye, you know, and fifty, I'm sorry, fifteen different high schools, five different middle schools. So that's one complaint. What are we doing about this? Where's your voices for our children? I can't read it at a county commission meeting, I can't read it here, but our, people are offended by it, by reading this stuff in public, but yet our children are allowed to read it, or exposed to it, or read to. So the other issue is Admin Reg one, uh, Admin Reg five-one-six-one and six-one-six-one. Administrative agencies must create and enforce regulations passed by elected legislatures. They're, uh, they create the statutes, uh, and the administrators are to fulfill the goals of the legislature. Is it the goal of the legislature in, uh, NRS three-eight-eight and three-eight-six to, um, keep parents, to infringe on parents' rights, usurp parents' rights? Uh, Regulation five-one-six-one, Rights and Protections, Right to Privacy. Staff shall not disclose information that may reveal a student's transgender or gender non-conforming status to others, including parents and guardians. Public that's watching this, are you aware of this? This is Washoe County regulation. Restroom access, students shall have access to the restroom that corresponds to their gender identity as expressed by the student and asserted at school. Nothing about parents here. Why are we usurping parental rights? Why, I wanna see this on the agenda, I know it takes two of you to put this on the agenda. Are there two of you that are concerned about parental rights? Are there at least two of you on this board? Can we get it on the board, on the agenda, please?
Thank you very much, Ms. Myers, we appreciate you.
You would go a long way in showing us how you really do care about our children.
JJ, do we have anyone else?
That's all I have.
Thank you so much, thank you very much for all of our speakers. All right, that closes Item six point zero one and brings us to Item six point zero two. This is our next meeting announcement, which is gonna be Tuesday, November twenty-eighth. And on that, six twelve PM, we adjourn. Thank you so much, everyone.